Okay, Mr. Williams.
President.
Ms. Langgallis?
Sorry, here.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Muschak?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
And Mr. Schuman?
Here. At the moment, the only one we're missing is JJ.
And I think I forgot Mr. Pachas. I thought it's, yeah, sorry about that.
President.
Okay, our, our first order of business is review and action on applications and that's oh nine dash twelve SP Mueller Park Realty LLC thirty Mueller Avenue, request for bond release. Is there someone here from Mueller Park?
No, we told them probably doesn't need to attend.
Okay, Brian, why don't you just explain it?
Sure. So back in two thousand and twelve, the zoning commission issued a special permit to thirty Mueller Avenue for a bunch of new uses and tenants going into the building. They're requesting their bond back. It's been about ten years now. There's all different tenants in there now, so the bond kind of isn't applicable to the site anymore. CEOs have been issued, so we don't need the bond anymore.
Okay. There any discussion of this? This is pretty straightforward. If not, can I have a motion to return or release the bond?
Mike makes the motion.
Mike made a motion and Richard seconds. Again, any discussion? Okay, I'm gonna, Darien, Darius, I'm gonna ask you not to vote on this one. And we'll, well, for safety reasons, we'll ask Mr. Pachas to, to vote. Let's do this with a show of hands. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it looks like it's unanimous. Let's move on to public hearings. The first public hearing, I believe the public section of that hearing has been closed. Steve, am I correct about that?
I was just gonna confirm that with Brian. I didn't believe so. But let me go back and look, Brian, unless you have that top of your head.
The public hearing portion for any of Wegmans?
Yes.
Correct. I don't believe we've closed any of it.
We have not. Okay, then I will explain for anyone who, from the public, who's going to want to comment, how we address public comment. The, the presentation, I believe Attorney Hennessy, the initial presentation has been completed. Am I right about that? You have to unmute yourself. Your-
Apology, apologies.
That's okay.
Yes, my recollection is on July seventh, we completed a presentation that dealt with the background of the site, introducing you to the company, its sustainability processes, its history, the engineering of the site, the site plan, basically, and an overall view, and certainly the architecture, and an overall view of the traffic operations. You then, this is my recollection, you then asked us to continue the hearing so that your Traffic and Transportation Department, Mr. Travers and Bala, could have an opportunity to dig deeper into the traffic and also engage with AKRF and Ms. Tarallo, who's here, and deal more, you know, profoundly, I guess, with the traffic and transportation issues. You also asked us to put our thinking caps on and see if we could somehow find a way to integrate some solar panels into the project.
Okay, thank you. I'll continue then. There will be some further discussion, primarily about traffic issues and solar panels. When that has been completed, we will open it up to the public for comment. We do not restrict how long members of the public can speak, but we do ask that, as a courtesy to everyone here and to other members of the public, that you keep your comments as brief as possible while covering all the points that are important to you. Also, keep in mind, you have only one opportunity to speak, and that's why I stress that you make sure that you cover all items that are important to you. Once all the members of the public who wish to comment have done so, we will turn it back to the developer's representative to respond to what they've heard, after which we will close the public hearing. We ask that when you come up to speak, and, and exactly how you do that will be explained when we get to the public portion of the meeting, that you provide us with your name and your address. And we ask that you simply keep your comments polite and collegial. Otherwise, we, we may have to cut you off. And I should hasten to say, fortunately, that that's never been the case here. Okay, with that, Mr. Hennessy, would you like to continue?
I'd be happy to. And for purpose of the record, I'll just reintroduce myself. I'm William Hennessy. I'm an attorney at Carmody, Torrance, Sandec, and Hennessy, here representing the applicants along with my partner, Jason Klein. As in previous sessions of this public hearing, Wegmans is represented by Steve Leedy, a project manager, and his colleague Kevin Marin, who's responsible for the architecture here. And we have from Langen Engineering, John Plant, a traffic engineer, and Tim Undirco, a civil engineer, who has been responsible for the design of the facility tonight. And the facility, as you know, sits on, why don't we go to the, Jason, why don't we go to the screen with the site plan? The facility sits on a site which is really composed of four different lots at the moment, the biggest one being the so-called MBI lot. And it has been and will be assembled with the lots at front on Post Road on Connecticut Avenue to form as an assemblage twelve point three acres, all in the B1 zone. All of the uses here are allowed. The hundred and ten thousand square foot MBI office building, as you know, will be demolished and removed, and the building will be replaced with a ninety-one thousand square foot Wegmans food market. And across that internal drive, as you see, there will be a two-level parking structure that is designed to take advantage to the very significant grade change between the Post Road, Connecticut Ave, and the site, so that you will have the experience, if you're approaching from the driveway either on Keeler or on the driveway on Richard, of being at the grade of the lower level of the garage. And if you're approaching from either of the drives on the Connecticut Ave, you'll, you'll be at the upper level. The Connecticut Ave signalized drive will take you directly into the top level of the, onto the top level of the garage. And the, the other drive to the south, next to what is now the urgent care center, will dip down and take you to the lower level. We explained to you the four points of ingress and egress, and the reason why we think that is an elegant and very, very efficient traffic solution and has the advantage of spreading the different users and traffic ingress and egress through different points, almost acting each as a relief valve for the other. I think, I'm speaking for Traffic and Parking now, Mr. Travers and Bala recognize that. I think your peer review consultants, Ms. Tarallo, would agree with that. A lot of time between the, the July seventh meeting and tonight has been spent in dialogue with those professionals. There's been a lot of communication. Your side has asked for significant amounts of additional information from Mr. Plant and his team. That information has been provided. Your side has requested a significant amount of mitigation, in our view, and we've been candid and frank, and these have been very cordial and collegial conversations. We've enjoyed working with everybody on your team. We've been frank in that we think the mitigation requested probably goes beyond the pale of what is maybe legally required as, you know, something that was directly impacted by our proposal. But nonetheless, Wegmans recognizes that the, that the mitigation requested is going to be of a significant benefit to the, to the entire corridor as the city and the state begin to study the corridor. And we're pleased to make those mitigation measures as articulated in the draft resolution that's been circulated. We've reviewed it. We are agreeable to it. And, you know, I could have Mr. Plant go through each and every one of these things, or we can leave it as a question and answer follow-up by you to him. I rather think that's probably the smarter way to do it. Much of it's very, very technical, and it involves, you know, hardware and techniques, and also software for some of these traffic lights that will allow them to. And I'm using a very unarticulate way of describing it, but I've been sitting in enough of these meetings that I, the sense I get is that the signals will be able to, you know, essentially in real time, be able to talk to each other and adjust on a, on a fairly quick and very efficient basis, so that there is no lost green time or undue red time. I guess is, is the way it would be portrayed. Additionally, there's pedestrian improvements, and there are bike lane improvements, and, and of course, a variety of just aesthetic improvements along the way. I, I think that, that about sums up what we, where we've arrived at vis a vis traffic. But if you'd like the specifics, again, we're happy to walk you through these. The other thing is the, the other main, main thing with the homework we were sent away with in early July related to the solar panels shortly after that hearing. Mr. Leedy and his team studied the roof of the, the, the food store more closely. And as, as we told you, there's challenges to locating solar panels on that roof due solely to the fact that, you know, the food store is a complicated structure, and a lot of the mechanicals that operate the chillers and the cooling systems and the freezers and everything that go into a food store are located on the roof. Nonetheless, they were able to locate area of about twenty percent of that roof that would be amenable to, you know, location of solar panels. And that was, and that is shown on this slide here. So we proposed and we're amenable to locating the panels where you see there. Subsequent to our submission of this, we engaged in more conversations with your staff, and they requested that there be panels located on the the two new outbuildings to be constructed as well. These buildings are much, much smaller, and they aren't, they're, as we told you early on, there's no tenant assigned to them yet. We don't know exactly what's going to wind up on the roof of these buildings. It might be very simple to put more than twenty percent of the roof covered with it, and it might be difficult. I think your staff completely recognizes that, and they just asked us to, you know, I'm gonna paraphrase it and say, give it our best try to, you know, efficiently use, you know, roof where feasible for, for those panels, and, and we're happy to do that. That left us with one building that we, you know, were still struggling with. We had indicated to your staff that we were very, Wegmans was very resistant toward locating any solar panels on the top level of the parking structure, and it was motivated by its deep commitment and deep interest, unabiding interest, in making a, as good a customer experience as possible. And the location of structures above the parking posed a particular concern because of a number of reasons: shadowing effect, rain shed, snow shed, icicles, and the recognition that the garage or the structure, it's not really a garage, more of a two-level structure, is really a transient facility. People come in, they come out, they're quite often in a bit of a hurry. Many people are coming in or out, which hopefully, they're all coming in or out with a shopping cart. They have sometimes baby strollers, walkers, all sorts of things. And the fewer impediments and the fewer things that do things that make you less than completely comfortable and familiar are viewed dimly from a customer's experience point of view. So we went back and forth on this for quite some time, and we had some, you know, pretty good conversations about what could be done and couldn't be done. And your staff provided us with information on, you know, why they thought it was the right thing, examples of other stores nationally where they had been done. Most of those were frankly in Sunbelt regions where, you know, you, you could expect a, a better, you know, return. But at the end of the day, this wasn't really so much a money thing as it was a, a, a customer experience thing. And your staff was quite clear that, in their view, it was more of a forward-thinking, in their view, and I'm, Steve, just interrupt me if I want, but what I was sensing from you is, Steve Kleppen, of course, was that it was more of a forward-thinking policy that your staff was looking to pursue than, than anything else. And they were candid that they didn't have a full grasp of all the technology, nor were they unsympathetic, nor were they unsympathetic to the customer experience view. So we have shared with them a possible array of solar panels that could go on a large piece of that upper garage, and it's not different than some of the other research that we have done over the last month or so on this topic. And I, I believe your staff is quite satisfied with the effort that has been made. What you're looking at here is the, the view of the upper level of the garage. The north side of the garage is at the top of the screen. And if you, the, the left side of the screen is, ends with the little driveway that would separate, we call it the Main Street driveway, that would separate the parking structure from the actual store. So that's the orientation. The idea would be to similarly apply over those yellow shaded portions of the garage roof, solar shades. And that equates to about twenty percent, I believe, of the, of the parking area and a significant number of the spaces. We have had discussions with your staff, and they've asked us to consider putting the same sort of structure over the, 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 the double-loaded row you see below that. We've been candid that it, it, that might be possible, but it really needs more study and thought. There is a snow gate at one end of that. And what we don't want to do is create an operational problem. If, if we have a taller machinery, you know, clearing snow from, from, from that roof, we promise to give it consideration as we go forward. But what you see here by our best calculation is about twenty to twenty percent of the coverage, and we're amenable to doing that. You see some examples, and I'll let Steve Levy talk to these examples that are contained in the photographs that you see surrounding the, the slide there as to, to where they are and, and how we've, how we've come around, if you will, to believing that we can still maintain the healthy customer experience with this level of coverage. Steve, do you want to just talk to this for a second?
Attorney Hennessy, before, before Mr. Levy speaks, I just wanted to say how I appreciate that Wegmans has moved on this issue. It's been an important issue to us, and we really do appreciate that Wegmans recognizes that and is, is willing to take these actions.
Well, well, thank you for saying that. And Steve, why don't you explain the research you've done in the past, I'll call it, month or so on this issue?
Yeah, so Steve Leedy, Wegmans Food Markets, again. Good to see y'all again. So, you know, this is new to us. It's new to the city of Norwalk and staff, so it's been a collaborative effort to try to figure out the best way to get this done so that it's successful for Wegmans and also successful for the city. So what we're showing here, just, this is just a little exhibit that we put together to, to show staff some of the things that are being done. The, the bottom right is a, is a Whole Foods in New York City. You can see where they've got these solar ports over the parking spots themselves. It seems to be effective. The upper left is actually a cutaway view of what it possibly could look like. It has an inverted center to it so that we can shed possible water away. That's a possibility that we do something like that. In the upper right is actually Rutgers University. It's a large parking field that they have there, and they've done similar structures. So while Wegmans and staff aren't sure of the best direction to go, this is what we're proposing for now. So what we're proposing to do is add some flexibility in the condition, and that's something that you'll be seeing when Steve Kleppen shows you the conditions that we discussed.
How much of the store energy does this sort of save you guys, or you get from the carport solar?
So, you know, we're gonna have to dig into it really deep into a final design, but we're being told between four and eight percent of our total energy.
And then you guys are getting another, I think you mentioned previously, about ten percent from the roof?
We, we love, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, the total, close to twenty percent. I mean, maybe twenty percent if you do the third row.
You know, we, we'd love to get there. Yeah, yeah.
That's great. If we can get there, and we're happy to report back, I think, Steve, on our experience here too. The other piece of this that's complicating, just so you know, is there's, this is structure that goes on top of the structure, of course, right? So that's gotta be engineered into this, and we have to be sure that, you know, the apparatus that holds these things up still allows the, you know, sufficient dimensions for the drive aisles and the, the parking stalls and all that other stuff that the garage wasn't designed with that in mind, but.
The majority of the examples that we're seeing are surface-level parking areas. So this is going to be elevated up in the air, right, on a structure with columns? So it'll be a challenge to make it all work, but that's what we're going with for right now.
And I would ask, Mr. Baker, Mr. Kleppen, I, I know that this is, this may wind up as part of the text change to, to make sure that we account and accommodate for the, you know, the dimensional, not only the, the parking stalls, which may be in a very minor way intruded by the, 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 the columns that hold these things up, but the, but the, but the height too, because they're gonna be obviously taller than the, than the, than just the two-level garage, which wouldn't have had any real visible height. It would have been the same, the same level as Connecticut Ave. These will be higher. So, so we are, so to, you will see a condition from your staff that integrates this, this proposal as a, as a condition of approval, and it's acceptable to us. Mr. Schuman, that's about all I have for now. If we'd like to move toward questions or public comment, you know, I'd like to have, you know, just a minute at the end, just to circle back and close up, but.
Well, an awful, an awful lot of the comment, written comment we've received deals with traffic issues. So I don't know if you want to address some of that or, or if you would prefer we ask our own consultant to speak to the traffic issues that have come up.
I, I, I think you've gotten some written response as of today from your traffic folks, from Mr., from Mr. Travers specifically. But I, I see that Ms. Tarallo's on, maybe it would be good just to get her overview of it. Because no matter, no matter what we say, I, I think you're probably gonna turn to her and as, as the peer review consultant to make sure she's in agreement with, with our statements. So it may be just more efficient. Have Marissa speak, or, or, or Mr. Plant, you can.
That's fine. Marissa?
Yes, hello.
Hi.
John can correct me if I say something that he doesn't agree with. We'll, we'll go in reverse from usual.
Fair enough.
Are you looking for me to do an overview of our review? Or did you have specific comments you received that you wanted to feed back on?
I think we'd like general feedback on where you view the traffic issues, what you have recommended, what TNP has recommended, and the way in which Wegmans has responded, and, and whether you're comfortable with that response professionally.
Yes, so when we got involved, we started reviewing the traffic study volumes and the basic fundamentals of the traffic study. We're also blessed by Connecticut DOT. All the trip generation, all of the study locations, how they were analyzed. We had minor comment. They were all addressed in full on our first round of comments. So as far as the traffic study itself is concerned, and how we deem something an impact or an improvement, I felt that that traffic study was very solid. Technically, our comments were addressed very quickly. Langen was very amenable to them. We had a discrepancy that in fairness actually exists within kind of your recommendations that you currently utilize, and that's just what we were defining as an impact. Basically, the recommendation for when mitigation is triggered is based on the overall intersections level of service. And in fairness to the applicant, that's how the language is currently drafted that the city utilizes. Generally, we like to move in a direction away from only looking at the intersection as a whole, because what happens with that average level of service is that it's an average of everything going on for all of the movements. So everything may be very good for the primary movements on the main line, A and B, and you may have a left turn failing, and you might have it getting notably worse with a development. That's not to say that's what's happening here, but this is generally how Um, that's not to say that's what's happening here, but this is generally how this works. You may not see that materialize as an overall intersection impact if that's all that you're looking at. So we asked them to kind of dig deeper and just to evaluate. All of the movements in particular that were impacted by Wegmans based on the trip generation. But as I mentioned, was blessed by Connecticut DOT as this is their roadway. Um, and we're in agreement with it as well. It's just that it's specific to, you know, a super supermarket store. So, we in doing that identified basically more, I don't want to call them impacts because again, under your wording, they're not impacts, but. Areas of concern. Um, we recognize that the way Wegmans is coming out now onto Route One. Um, but also still having ancillary driveways is definitely a better circulation pattern. Um, if everyone were just to comment anecdotally about it, if everyone were to have exited to Richards and Keeler. They would have been making a lot of left turns off of a side street, which is really a side street. It would have notably backed up Richards and Keeler and it most likely would have hindered the main line further. Or it just would have created very large problems on Richards and Keeler if the state had just maintained prioritizing Route One. So the access would have absolutely been an issue if it hadn't been modified. Um, so we recognize that driveway was an improvement, um, but we also recognize that this is Wegmans and it needs some additional capacity. Um, just because Route One is already very congested and progressing vehicles and it's not solely by Wegmans, but. You don't want to just keep making something worse and not make it better. Um, the TNP department and myself don't. Believe that with the goals that the city is undertaking right now, nor with the land that's currently there, that. Blanketly trying to widen something or getting a turning lane is actually going to make an improvement. Um, so they're looking at the same adapt, we discuss the same adaptive technology that you may recognize from by the Sono Mall. Um, that's gonna adapt in real time to traffic conditions outside of Wegmans. Route One in this area is an excellent corridor for it because of all of the retail and all the fluctuations in traffic. Also, the state hasn't updated the timing for this corridor in quite a while. It's very labor intensive. So this will really bring the corridor a big step up in this section. And really what we went back and forth with a couple of times with the applicant is how extensive the adaptive system needs to be. Um, so our recommendation was a minimum um of three intersections. That would include Richards, um, Keeler, both at Connecticut Avenue and then the Wegmans main driveway. Opposite of the Walmart driveway on Connecticut Avenue. So those three locations. Based on what's currently signalized today, um, an additional two for up to five is an ideal. Um, starting point for the system. Um, the city in, in speaking with TNP, the goal would always be the system would grow. But that Wegmans wouldn't solely provide it for the entire corridor. Um, we've asked for two additional locations at the ninety-five ramps and the drive between the ninety-five ramps and Richards Avenue. Um, presuming that the whole signals don't need to be modernized in Connecticut DOT because we don't have full control. Um, we being also representing the city because these are controlled by Connecticut DOT, so we need to have a further discussion with them. Uh, we have had initial discussions enough to know that they agree with this technology and they find it acceptable. They're utilizing it. Um, we just don't know explicitly what they may say. They want the signals upgraded um to be in order to run the adaptive. Um, I know from my own technical experience in deploying these as the cities that this can be done um easily with the signals that are out there. But again, Connecticut's U T might ask all the signals to be replaced. So the city in fairness to that, I believe, has um. Requested that up to five, given the amount of improvements that Connecticut DOT asks. Um, I'm in agreement with that because I also think uh, when we get into these discussions after these meetings with Connecticut DOT. Uh, myself and the city would, would be working with the applicant to try to get Connecticut DOT to focus on the five licenses for the adaptive over. You know, ripping out traffic signals and putting in new equipment just for the sake of it. That's not gonna actually improve the efficiency. So what we landed on was a lot of technology improvements and then um, that was in my memo. Um, my one outstanding comment that I know the applicant is working on is just safety improvements for the intersection of Richard and. Um, Connecticut Avenue because it's really high crash um location. But in response to that, the city also has asked for some pedestrian improvements there. Which is not specific to the crash history, but it's to prevent pedestrian crashes from also becoming part of the crash history. Um, so that's part of where the city's comments came from on pedestrians and then also the master plan and they're looking at. You know, where they wanted bike lanes as a whole, lanes. Um, my focus, as I mentioned, was on traffic study, which I feel is complete. Um, and includes everything necessary and then this adaptive technology, which I. I feel with the inclusion of this adaptive technology that Wegmans is truly doing all that they can to fix their segment of Connecticut Avenue um within reason.
Thank you, Marissa. Any questions of uh Marissa or uh Attorney Hennessy?
Yes, I, I have a question for each actually.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, Mister Hennessy first, uh, I'm, I know that I. I'm fairly certain I heard you say this, but I just want to confirm it. You're in a, you're, you and your client are in agreement with all of the. Um, recommendations that were made in the resolution. I'm sorry, you're muted.
Apologies again. Um, as, as of late this afternoon, yeah, the answer to your question is yes. Uh, and uh, there was a clarification letter and a confirmation letter sent by Mister Travers. Late this afternoon. I don't have the exact time, but it's dated today and it really clarified what uh, Ms. Tarallo was just speaking about. Which is the pedestrian improvements at Richards and uh, uh, Connecticut Avenue. And it was our, frankly, our position that some of the crosswalk improvements. Uh, particularly uh, the one on the north side of Richards for uh, I mean, on the north side of the intersection. Uh, really, it, in, in our view, uh, wasn't gonna be a result of any. Any activity on our part, uh, and that should be something that the, the city should bear. Uh, Mister Travers uh explained why he disagreed and that it needed to be done and uh. Uh, our, our main concern was nobody really understood the extent of the work that would be crap. Would there be trenching and underground conduit and those sorts of things? Or would it be, you know, just some hardware and pad heads and uh paint on the ground? And uh, he came up with a, a very uh, frankly, a, a good and innovative solution. That uh, you know, the city would bear any responsibility for underground trenching conduits and those sorts of things for that. And uh, since we were gonna be out putting pad heads and painting other elements of it, we, we would pick up. That, that, that other piece of it, uh, even though everybody acknowledges that uh. Unlikely that any pedestrian going to Wegmans will be using that, but. If it makes the corridor that much better immediately, uh, what uh. Mister Levy and his team are amenable to doing it. So the answer to your question, Mister Rowan is yes.
Thank you. Um, and now my question for Mister Allah. I, I did read all of the um correspondence and reports between you and. The other traffic consultant and I'm not gonna pretend to be able to. Discuss what the vocabulary that you use, um, what the result of it is, but. I will say that I have been astounded a number of times going from Wall Street to South Norwalk and South Norwalk to Wall Street. That if you go through a green light and you maintain the speed limit, you never have to stop. So is, is that basically the gist of the um. Software things that you were talking about on Route One that would um adapt. To the traffic that was going on because my experience on, on Route One is as much traffic as there is over there. Um, if there's an ability to get in and out of where you're going, it's not so bad and I. I, I, like Mister Scholman said, really appreciate uh Wegmans uh. Not only buying the tract of land to develop for their store, but buying other ones to make the entryway. And the exit um to the store better. I appreciate that and I just wanna. Make sure that I understand what you're saying and I think I do that, that these measures will, will um not only. Mitigate any problems that Wegmans will create, but make Route One in that area better anyway. Is, is, is my understanding that correctly?
Yes, and the goal of those systems is progression. Um, Norwalk in particular is, is really phenomenal about managing their traffic signals and their signal systems. Um, the caveat with all of these systems is Connecticut DOT will potentially own this one segment, so they'll have kind of some control over the parameters. But um, yes, it's a very good start. It's a very good start in the end of the corridor. And the other reason I forgot to mention as to why, I believe it was in some of the TNP's memos. As to why we've asked for this start and these five is that TNP is also um undertaking with the state. A corridor wide study for Route One that potentially will add further adaptive technology for all of this retail. Um, or other further improvements, but it was another reason that we definitely didn't want to see Wegmans put something in that would potentially be ripped out. Because it was more temporary or a patch fix. The adaptive also has the longevity of becoming part of that corridor study without any issue. And largely probably being extended. Um, so yes, as you get more and more of these online, you're gonna get more and more progression up Route One. Um, and it will certainly help um patrons getting in and out of Wegmans and Richards and Keeler in particular.
Excellent, thank you. Move over to East Avenue now.
Do we have? One quick, quick question.
Go ahead, Nick.
This is, I think for staff, but in the TNP study on page three, they talk about the landscape plan should be updated. To provide maximum street, uh, street trees along the site frontage. Is that included in the um? The, the, was that discussed at all? Is that, you guys okay with what uh, anything on that front?
Yeah, so that was included, Nick, um, as part of a condition of approval. Wegmans has. Been okay with that condition. Um, and it's really a small, small area along uh Keeler.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Tammy?
Yes, thank you. Uh, first a question to Ms. Tarallo. Um. I just want to make sure I understand that when the DOT is asking or. Analyzing the, the additional traffic from Wegmans and they're looking at the whole corridor. Do they speak to Costco and say, you need to help with this? Like, you know, that was approved years ago and. To me, Costco is one of the worst uh traffic creators, especially if you're coming. From the west and exiting I ninety-five um off of Exit thirteen, I believe. It literally gets backed up onto the exit at a holiday times with people trying to get into the Costco parking lot. And so any improvements to me would be a good idea. But is the DOT addressing these other businesses that are already in existence or are they putting all the burden on Wegmans? And what, and like, you know, Chick-fil-A and other places along the way that are causing big traffic jams?
So unfortunately, so for this application, the, the burden of installing any of this adaptive is on Wegmans. There is a. Issue or I guess a, I've, I've, I've always seen this be very difficult to happen after the fact of once an applicant is in. Um, getting them to contribute further unless they have some type of condition of approval in their post implementation. So to my knowledge, Costco and everyone on the corridor does not. Um, Wegmans in fairness has acknowledged too that they didn't contribute to all of this, which is why there is some back and forth on how much of the system to provide. Um, so we've put three as the minimum with a possible cap of five if the cost is fair because DOT didn't ask for too many other upgrades. Um, this will also help. They will be directly benefiting Costco and, and the Exit thirteen because those are the two others that we've asked for. Um, the possibility where others could be contributing to this is. Well, one, there's a, doesn't happen very often, but there's a possibility that Wegmans traffic runs so well that everybody only wants to go to Wegman's store. And ShopRite and everybody else decide that they're gonna upgrade their signals to uh get people in and out. Um, other goodness of their hearts, there's always that possibility. Uh, I find it generally unlikely, but you can always hope. Um, but as I mentioned, there's this corridor study that the uh town and state will be doing and then that would be. Potential federal funding to continue to expand this further, but yeah, unfortunately with. The structure of the approvals, um, I don't know that you have any mechanism in place to go back to anybody that's already had approvals. Though if they come back to you asking for anything else, um, you can now certainly have this system under your, in, in your consideration for that.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I guess this question to Mister Hennessy. If this goes through and the two businesses that are on, currently on Connecticut Avenue, the bank and the health stop place. Those buildings are going to be removed and are, in your long-term plan. Do you plan on a new business going in there? And if so, what is it? Because that's just also gonna add to more cars coming on that section of Connecticut Avenue.
Uh, Steve can probably answer that, but the bank will remain. Uh, well, Steve, why don't you, why don't you take that?
Yeah, the, the bank will remain. The reason the bank was acquired was so that we had access to the signal. The uh, um, the other two properties um and John Plant could speak to this. Are included in the traffic study. So there's been inclusion for uh retail buildings at those two locations. That are built into all of this traffic.
Okay, so those two buildings actually are not being taken down.
Yep, there, there's.
Okay, I can take that. John Plant from Langen, um, there's, there's two buildings you, you see between the Wegmans and Route One. In, in the uh salmon color. The, those two buildings, one, the lumber liquidators and the other is um. I can't remember the, the, the tenant that's in there now.
Carried up, yeah.
Yep, so those two buildings, existing buildings will be taken down. And new buildings, retail buildings will be placed uh on those lots. And the reason those buildings were taken down was to facilitate these two extra driveways out to Route One. So to facilitate the traffic solution, Wegmans is acquiring, you know, control of those lots. To be able to do this, tearing down those buildings, building new buildings. Um, we did not take credit in the traffic report for the, the existing traffic from those existing buildings. But we did add traffic associated with these two mil, new buildings into the traffic report. So your, your point is, is that accounted for? Yes, it's accounted for in the traffic assessment.
And hopefully. Mister, Mister Galus, I'll also point out that the, to the extent that of interest. The urgent care center now is just under eighteen thousand square feet. The new building proposed is about eighty-eight hundred. And the uh existing floor, the Mister Shower Door, lumber liquidators, the, the building behind. The bank is about a little over eleven thousand. The new building's about eight. Uh, and there, there is no tenant for those yet. In, in time, there will be. There'll be whatever the zone allows. But they've been accounted for as retail facilities, general retail.
Hopefully, it won't be another fast food establishment with a drive-through.
Another Chick-fil-A, just kidding.
Yeah, that'll make the traffic better at the other block, Mike. All right, thank you very much.
Uh, anything else uh before, Mike, did you want to say something?
I just said another Chick-fil-A, just kidding.
Okay.
Uh, it was a joke, sorry.
Had anything else before uh we open this up to the public? All right, I don't see anything. Attorney Hennessy? Have you said everything you wish to say?
Uh, are, are we done with the public comment, Mister Scholman?
We haven't begun the public.
I, I, I would say, I would say, let's go to the public and then if I could have a minute or two at the very end, I'd appreciate this.
Absolutely. Okay, uh, Brian, uh, would you explain uh how members of the public uh can uh ask to speak?
Sure, so if you're a member of the public and you'd like to speak regarding this application, you hit the raise your hand button. It's at the bottom of your screen. Or you hit star nine if you're on a phone. So can raise your hand, bottom of your screen, star nine if you're dialed in. Not seeing anybody, Louis.
No one? Uh, let's just wait a minute, uh.
Okay, we got one.
And see if anyone pops.
Paul Cantor.
Okay.
Did you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so, um, I want to speak to the is- issue of traffic. My name is Paul Cantor. I live. My name is Paul Cantor. I live in on one eighty-four Phyllis Street in West Norwalk. And if you enable Wegmans to locate one of its stores at the Connecticut and Richards Avenue's intersection. It's going to create a traffic nightmare for the surrounding residential neighborhoods and for students on their way to the many neighborhood schools. People from Stanford, Darien, Greenwich, Westport, on their way to the store. Will exit I ninety-five and the merit onto Connecticut and New Canaan Avenues. And in order to avoid the traffic they encounter as a result of others on their way to Wegmans. You know, we end up winding their way down Flax Hill Road, North Taylor Avenue, Nursery Street, Fox Run. And Keeler Avenues and Richards Avenue and other streets that run through residential neighborhood and are not meant to handle such traffic. Please do not allow Wegmans to create a traffic nightmare. For so many Norwalk residents by locating one of its stores on the Richard and Connecticut Avenue's intersections. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if anyone else would like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool and then I will also, um, pull up some correspondence that we received, uh, so that they could be entered in on the record. Share my screen. So hopefully you can all see that.
We can see it, Brian.
Okay, um, so this, uh, letter addressed to Jessica Vanaszek, uh, Chief Economic and New Development. Um, so as the Chief Financial Officer of MBI, I wanted to reach out to you before tomorrow night's meeting. Uh, tomorrow night's planning and zoning commission vote on the Wegmans development. As you are likely aware, MBI has been a multi-decade Norwalk corporate citizen, and we are excited to remain in the community after our sale to Wegmans has been consummated. In fact, we have already signed a lease at Merit, the Merit Seven complex. Of course, this lease is contingent upon our sale going through. So given the significant time and money that we have spent on this project to date, we are very hopeful that the Wegmans project receives approval from the commission. Any delay would be harmful to our objectives and rejection would be devastating. Given the obvious and significant benefit that this development will provide to the town and its residents, we expect a measure to pass. We just wanted to ensure that you and the mayor knew where we stood on this matter in advance of the decision. Regards, Mike Wilbur. I had one more letter to share that received. Uh, so this letter is from, uh, Joanne Horvath. Um, my name is Joanne Horvath and reside at one Cobbler's Lane, Norwalk, Connecticut. I am very concerned about the location that Wegmans Food Markets has chosen to build off Connecticut Avenue mainly because of the traffic nightmare it would cause to surrounding neighborhoods. And the impact all the additional traffic it would generate on Connecticut Avenue and Richards Avenue. At the present time, the shopping area is highly congested due to the many successful stores that are already in this area. To me, it appears that Wegmans has chosen this particular parcel because it can be seen from I ninety-five. First of all, if people are coming from the South on I ninety-five to get to this new grocery store, drivers would have to get off at exit thirteen, which is heavily used because of, because they use exit to go to Costco, Walmart, Home Goods, Home Depot and other highly trafficked stores. Secondly, if drivers from the North want to get to Wegmans, they would take I ninety-five exit fourteen to get there. Getting off that exit now is a, is really a challenge as traffic backs up and stalls between the intersection and the gas station across the street. Adding more traffic there would put traffic at a complete standstill, in my opinion. It is over capacity now. If people decide to use backroads to get to Wegmans, they would be going through residential neighborhoods such as Richards Avenue, Flax Hill Road and Scrivener Avenue, creating a negative impact on the residents who live in these areas. Another concern of the P M Z Commission would be whether or not the State of Connecticut would permit a new driveway coming out on Connecticut Avenue, State Road. Many years ago, there was supposed to be a twin tower building on Connecticut Avenue, but the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation wouldn't allow that second building to be built because it would generate too much traffic in that area. That proposed second building was turned into a pet smart retail store. So I am urging the Norwalk Planning and Zoning Commission to vote no on Wegmans application to build a food market at this Norwalk location and choose another site in the I ninety-five quarter that is not so highly congested by traffic. Thank you. Seeing as nobody else is.
Hello.
Mr. Fuentes, we can hear you.
Thank you, thank you. Miguel Fuentes, I am one of the business representatives for the carpenters union or the North Atlantic States Regional Council of Carpenters. Many members in, uh, the Norwalk area, certainly people who worked on the Sono Mall and saw how they mitigated the traffic by the design and the things that they implemented there. My membership is certainly very excited about Wegmans coming into town and is confident that you've taken all of the steps to mitigate some of those risks. And quite honestly, some of the very consumers who live there now, who are going to the stores that were mentioned, are the same people who are going to be going to the Wegmans, uh, facility. So, uh, I don't know that the impact is going to be as big as we think it might be, certainly different, but that's something that should, uh, prohibit the commission from voting positively and making sure that that happens. So we're really excited and hoping to, you know, be a part of it if this thing takes, uh, hold. Thank you. Thank you.
Um, and last call for anyone to speak, uh, you can use the raise your hand tool or hit star nine. All right, I think that's it, Louis.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Uh, Attorney Hennessy, turn it back to you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to be very brief, uh, and, and just let me address the two, uh, speakers, the, the, I guess, guess it's Ms. Horvath who wasn't a speaker, wrote a letter regarding traffic. And Mr. Cantor, who shared his ideas on traffic. I, I, what they reminded me of is something that we haven't underscored here, which is that it, it is not as though this site is undeveloped now and doesn't contribute to any traffic already on the road. Particularly, uh, Mr. Cantor is worried about school traffic. Right now, this site produces traffic associated with office use. Uh, in fact, the building is bigger than what is proposed. That traffic is already in the network on the streets, if you will. I'll be at a slightly different peak hour time, but it's there, uh, and it will be removed and it will be replaced with the traffic from the Wegmans. Uh, our traffic, uh, uh, analysis, uh, was of the most conservative imaginable and assumed that that traffic wasn't there. And, uh, so I think if there's belts and suspenders, uh, ever associated with an analysis, both by, uh, the city's end and by our end, this is it. Uh, we are very confident on our end, uh, and I think your city staff and your peer review consultants are satisfied that the traffic fears will not materialize here. And in fact, the contributions being offered by, uh, uh, Wegmans, particularly at this point in time, as the city embarks on a corridor study with some advanced technology. Will produce a situation that is better out there than, uh, has been the experience of people in the past. So that's what our response to that piece is. Uh, and I would just like to briefly close and remind everybody of the many benefits that come with this project. Uh, not the least of which is the ability of, uh, uh, the city of Norwalk to, uh, keep a valued, longtime, uh, member of the business community. And MBI, the letter that you saw, uh, Mr. Wilbur having provided, uh, indicates that they have apparently arrived at a lease, uh, to occupy space at Merit Seven right here in town. Uh, which is terrific. Uh, that does a couple of things. Uh, number one, it reduces the vacancy rates, uh, and, and at the same time, it reduces the amount of office space, you know, especially in older buildings. So the, the, the numerator goes down and denominator goes up, I guess. It, it works, it works fine. It's a good indicator, uh, of a healthy city financially. Um, and it keeps them here, which is great. Uh, I think there is some, you know, I'm not embarrassed to say, there's some great prestige over being able to be the home of the Connecticut's first Wegmans. Uh, I, I know, just walking around, uh, town and talking to people, people are excited about it and that, that's great. But beyond that, there's jobs. Uh, we talked about it early on. There's a hundred and eighty full-time jobs and up to two, two fifty, uh, in terms of, uh, part-time jobs. At, at salaries that are, that are, that are very competitive and very noticeable and very good. Uh, there's the, uh, the, 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 the contributions to the signalization. There's the pedestrian safety. There's the bike lanes. Uh, there's the sustainability, not just the solar panels, but in Wegman's view, the, uh, other, uh, the, the, uh, elements of the company's ethos and ethic is to sustainability, which is significant. There's the redevelopment of the entire twelve-point-three acres. Uh, these are not, none of these buildings are, are, are new and exciting. Uh, even the ones, the smaller ones that are coming down and being replaced, they'll all be replaced. There'll be new landscaping. There'll be new, uh, site design. Uh, it'll be a, a, a brand-new twelve-point acre, uh, campus, you can think of it. There'll be better stormwater management that will create, uh, a healthier environment for us all. And then there's the, the money end of it. And we, uh, have noted here, there's permitting fees and, uh, building permit fees and things of that nature. But what we haven't talked about is the significant tax revenue that will fall from this. You know, I think all in all, uh, if you, uh, look at this, it's a home run for the city. And it can, it, it complies with, with, uh, all of the uses allowed in the zone. This is what your, uh, P O C D, uh, encourages this type of development. We are asking for some, uh, relief in terms of the, uh, text changes to allow for the garage to be built. We think that's smart, good planning, particularly the way it's, uh, designed to position. And the other small text change we're asking is for some, uh, the, a little bit more flexibility in our, uh, ability to design an interesting, uh, building. With this copula clock, clock tower element, which we think is completely additive. And as we indicated to you on the first night, uh, all it does is it takes, uh, a, a very successfully used element of other zones already in your reg. It allows this zone, the B-one zone, to use that creative zoning tool. So for all those reasons, we hope you agree with us that this is a great application and is worthy of your approval. Thank you.
Any final questions, uh, for Attorney Hennessy?
Louis, before, I just have one more. I, I missed one letter that we received. Hopefully you don't hear my dog barking in the background, but, um, we did have one more letter that I forgot to read.
Sure, go ahead.
I have a question, Luke.
Find it. Okay, um, so esteemed members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as a resident of Norwalk at one oh five Richards Avenue. Uh, I am ready to express my support of the pending zoning application by Wegmans to construct a grocery store on Connecticut Avenue. I feel the western portion of Connecticut, of Norwalk needs additional choices for grocery shopping as the two other locate, two others located on Connecticut Avenue between Route Seven and the Darien border. Coincidentally, immediately across the street from each other, each have their own issues. Stop and shop is outdated and in need of renovations with dwindling stock and therefore customers. Shop Right, on the other hand, uh, as a newer store, is much more vibrant and therefore extremely congested with very busy, if not insufficient parking. Its one access point on Route One creates excessive traffic, which has been exacerbated by the new Chick-fil-A store. The construction of Wegmans may in fact reduce traffic by giving Norwalk residents an additional shopping option on Connecticut Avenue and shift traffic more evenly along Route One. I also support the expansion of the labor force in Norwalk in all reasonable forms and fashion. I have seen firsthand the many benefits of Wegmans that benefits Wegmans brings to the neighborhood that operates through local employment, civic investment and overall improvement of its local neighborhoods. Finally, the experience offered to its customers is without equal in its, uh, in its market segment through its breadth and quality of offerings. I recommend anyone who wants personal experience, this should visit the relatively new store in Harrison, New York or on Westchester Avenue, I two eighty-seven, just off the Merritt Hutchinson River Parkway. Uh, can they read this into, uh, can I read the above into the public record of the special meeting tonight? Sincerely, Mike Cottle at one oh five Richards Avenue. Um, and then before, before Tammy, um, just two quick administrative items. Uh, the application for text amendment was referred to the town of Darien. Um, they didn't provide a response, um, therefore no issues with it. And, uh, the text amendment was also referred to Wes Cog, who, um, did not raise any concerns.
Okay, uh, again, any, any other comments?
Yes, Luke, one quick question for Mr. Hennessy, please. Uh, Mr. Hennessy, did, did Wegmans consider any other locations in Norwalk and, and potentially also specifically two eighty Main Avenue? The Brownfield site?
Ms. Alice, I'm going to ask Mr. Leedy to answer that question.
Yeah, and, and I don't have a specific answer to, to that particular site that you're asking about, but we have been, and I, quite frankly, I wanted to get this in here for a little while. Mr. Ferguson had asked a question of why we had chosen, uh, the city, this site in the city of Norwalk.
I do recall, Mr. Leedy.
And I've been trying to get in there, but you know, it's tough to get in on Bill. Um, so I reached out to our real estate folks, uh, and they came back with, um, our owners, which is the Wegmans family, right? Uh, always wanted to be in Connecticut and we have looked all over there in the last twenty-five years, all along Route One, which they refer to as the Gold Coast. Is that what the locals there refer to it as? We had never been able to find any, uh, anywhere we could really fit physically that made sense. Norwalk fits all of our criteria, population and income demographics, a higher percentage of food enthusiasts that would appreciate what we have to offer. A site that has great transportation access and visibility and a site that we can physically fit on, which this is a tight squeeze and we're building a parking garage. But, uh, Mr. Ferguson, I wanted to make sure that I got that answer to you.
Thank you, Ms. Leedy, for responding to that question because I was going to ask that question if that was not answered. So I really appreciate that.
Yeah, you're welcome. And did I answer the other question properly? I'm not familiar with that particular site.
Yes, it's much smaller. It's on Main Avenue, which is the old Route Seven, um, going up toward the Merritt Parkway, sort of between I ninety-five and the Merritt Parkway in an area of town that is not as heavily big box stored as Connecticut Avenue. But it is smaller.
Yeah, it, it, this is a, a big store, you know, ninety-plus thousand square feet with a parking requirement, so it takes up a lot of land.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, any final questions? All. If not, uh, we'll close the hearing and, um, we'll, we'll move on to action. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And Steve, just a reminder that we, you need to work on the text chain first.
We, we understand that, Attorney Hennessy.
I, thank you. And thank you for all your, uh, patience and time and attention.
Okay, uh, so, uh, action, uh, on, uh, item four, twenty-twenty-two dash nineteen, uh, are, uh, this is the text amendment. Is, uh, I'll ask, uh, either Brian, uh, or Steve, um, there are actually, uh, two items in here. Uh, can we handle it as a single item, uh, voting on the text amendment?
Yeah, yeah. So it's one application for just two, two text changes.
Okay, uh, can I have a, uh, motion, uh, to either approve or, uh, deny the, uh, text amendment? Okay, Richard, uh, has moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, um, I heard Steve's, I saw Steve's hand.
There you go.
Steve seconded. Um, Brian, can you bring up the, uh, proposed, uh, uh, resolution?
Sure.
Uh, on this one, um, uh, we can seat, uh, two of the alternates. Uh, I'm going to, uh, since we, uh, previously, uh, seated Mr. Patches, uh, we're going to, uh, seat Mr. Williams and Ms. Jordan Byron.
Let me know if you need me to scroll down.
Well, I'm ready. I don't know about anybody else, so. Okay, uh, we have a. Okay, we have a motion to approve. And the second, are there any questions or comments on the resolution to approve the text amendment? All right, if not, let's go to a roll call vote.
Hold on one second, Luke, I'm looking at the staff memo, are there two, so there were there two versions of eighteen, one eighteen, five, two, one?
There was, you had thrown out a modification out there. If you were so inclined, but it sounds like by how the the hearing had went, that the modification is likely not necessary at this point.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Yep.
Is that, that means the one with the solar panel, the fifty one, sorry, five twenty one D one?
Right, you're not, that's not included, it's just that, right, it's the amendment as proposed by the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let me change. All right, I'll see, Mr. Williams? This is to vote in favor of the. Did you vote yes or no?
Oh, ye- yes, I said I under.
Thanks. Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Moushak?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Sorry, yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
And Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay. The second item is twenty twenty two S P slash S P R. And we're voting here on the special permit for Wegmans Food Market. Do I have a motion to either approve or deny? Richard, Richard moves.
I'll second, Mike.
Mr. Moushak seconds. All right, let's take a look at the draft resolution. For this, for this vote, it'll be Mr. Williams and Mr. Patches.
And so FYI, on this one, because of the, you know, changing T M P updated comments and the solar panels over the garage, there's been some updates. So when we get to those, we'll take a look.
Okay, thank you.
So item three is new, that's an update, that's for the solar panels over the roof of the parking garage?
Brian, I don't understand solar panels slash carpports.
It's, there's, so there's the kind of different just terminology, it means the same thing, the solar panels are going to go over the parking spaces. Some, some companies call them solar carpports. We just want to, you know, make sure all bases are covered.
Okay.
And then seven is the meat of the the T M P comments.
Right.
Take our time going through those.
Hey, Brian, can you put the five, please?
What was I saying?
Five, please, back to five, sorry.
Sure. So these are those two outbuildings, Steve, this smaller retail ones, which are untenanted at the moment. So we kind of left it flexible, so, you know, based on who goes in there, they'll present plans to show solar on the roof.
Understood, thank you.
Number, number four there, no, no, you're, I'm sorry.
Sure.
It was the Roman numeral four. The Costco driveway slash Gracie Sports, what is Gracie Sports?
I believe it's the, it's either the the, the retail outbuildings in front of Costco, or it's the ones across the street. So it's essentially saying the, the the Costco driveway, there's the light there to get into the Costco, that's one of the lights included as part of the.
If I may, that's a four-legged intersection, so it's Gracie Sports driveway and Costco's driveway meet with Route one for four legs of the driveway. So they're just listing both legs of the driveway for full terminology.
Thank you.
So this is updates here, this is just going over the crosswalks at the Richards Ave, Connecticut Ave intersection.
I was going to make a quick comment, if you don't mind, Chair, is it okay if I make a quick comment?
Sure, go ahead, Steve.
Richard made a great point about the West Avenue, Wall Street, the free traffic lights. Is there a way that we could do a hard stop off of exit thirteen so that we can freeze up some of the ongoing traffic? Is there a way that we can not just have a study, because I'm, we're all past that, but like, is there a way that we could freeze something up to actually reduce a light for this intersection at Richards Avenue? Makes sense, or am I just being a traffic guy without being a traffic guy?
Steve, what's your question, you want to get a stop sign?
Yeah, Mr. Rowena made a great point, from West Avenue to the mall, you can actually go, you can coast and hit the mall within three minutes, right, Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
And I'm thinking, could we do a hard stop light? So that we can free up some of the traffic burden going into this new improvement slash development temporarily? Or this will be a free going light off exit thirteen northbound? I'm just helping out two thousand people when it comes to this year and a half process, so to speak.
Isn't, isn't there already a traffic light at the bottom of the ramp of the scene going northbound?
There is, but the left.
Are you proposing a yield?
I, I don't know, but the left lane, the far left, we take a right off the light before the Doubletree going to Richards Avenue with the McDonald's. It causes issue with those taking a left going towards West Norwalk, the, the, the end corridor of West Norwalk. I'm, I'm just saying, when I see installation, new crosswalks, I'm thinking like, could it be some verbiage that would free up some of that space?
So are you, are you thinking of a dedicated lane?
Yes, I am thinking of that.
That might be something we can ask, you know, our T M P staff to take a look at after the application. You know, since we kind of closed the hearing process.
Yes, thanks, Steve, like, and Steve, you talk to myself and Mr. Rowena, that'd be great. I think we can put some good flavor on that for you.
Sure, yeah, I can send an email out.
All right, thank you.
I would say that that intersection is part of the planned corridor study. I know you said no more studies, but I'll just point it out and that ideally there will be five adapted licenses, that's what we're all pushing for. And that will at least include this intersection, which will give you that exact same travel experience, ideally. This is a little different than the Sono Mall, but it will give you a similar travel experience from here through to Keeler, and then there can be additional improvements such as turning lanes in coordination with that adaptive install that the city recognizes after the installs on that can improve it further.
Yeah, Marissa, I'm not talking about Keeler at all, though, nothing about Keeler, talking about Richards, not Keeler.
Yes.
Okay, keep Richards.
Sorry, I was just talking about the extent of where the adapter, it goes all the way to Keeler, yep.
All right, let's, let's keep, let's keep moving on this.
I think once you get past number nine, it starts to get some more of the boilerplate.
Exactly, why don't you just scroll up from eleven? No, the other way, I'm sorry. I guess I meant scroll down. Okay, are there any further questions regarding the resolution? If not, we'll go to a vote. Again, let's, let's do this as a roll call.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Patches? Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Moushak?
Wholeheartedly, yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes, and I'd really like to thank staff and Wegmans for going back and forth, especially on the solar and a lot of the things we've been talking about. I know you guys worked out really hard at this, and I think it's a really great precedent for the city and really looking forward to it.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes, with reservation and concern about the size of the operation and the additional congestion. But yes, I like Wegmans idea, proposal.
Mr. Rowena?
I'm going to say yes as well with a comment, if I might. I thought it was really interesting, the first day of the presentation about what type of a citizen Wegmans would be. But I, I just have to say that I am absolutely grateful that instead of an applicant coming in and, and explaining to us what's involved in a special permit or what's required under zoning regulations, that they have stepped up to the plate, put their money where their mouth is, however you want to call it. So I am voting yes.
And Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Hi. The adaptive technology, which is in use at the mall, and we've been talking about it already a couple of times tonight, down West Avenue. I, I was skeptical because I'm in the neighborhood probably closest to the, to the Sono collection. And although I supported the mall, I was always worried about some traffic Armageddon. And honestly, our neighborhood has talked about this, our Golden Hill Association, since the mall has opened, and we actually prefer to go down past the mall now because the traffic flows better than it did before the Sono collection was there. And certainly they added capacity to the road, but mostly it's because the lights are smart lights. And it is a remarkable achievement for me to, to see the traffic flowing in and out of the mall, which far exceeds, I think, the volume of Wegmans smoothly and local traffic at peak hours, which is when I'm down there using it, flowing in and out. So I, I'm, that's one of the reasons why I'm confident this is going to work. I also want to add that I nearly moved to Ithaca, New York because of the Wegmans that was there, and so about twenty years ago, I had a choice of where to live before I decided on Norwalk. And Ithaca, the Wegmans was at the top of the list of reasons to move to Ithaca. So I wanted to say, I didn't want to say that during the public hearing, but I just thought it was one of the most amazing stores I had ever seen. And I cannot wait for Wegmans to come to Norwalk and open up. And those solar panels that they saw at Rutgers, which is my alma mater, is, is going to be great if that works out, I hope it does, and thank you again.
Thank you, Mike. All right, with that, we'll move on to next item of business. And that is twenty twenty two dash thirty R. Planning and Zoning Commission, zoning regulations text amendment to Article ten and Article forty two to revised accessory dwelling units regulations. Again, this is a public hearing, so the public will have an opportunity to comment after the staff has made their presentation. With that, Brian, is it going to be you or Steve?
I'll start it off, so I'll pull up the latest memo that I had sent out. All right, so if you remember the, the state of Connecticut passed Public Act twenty one dash twenty nine last year, which required some updates to zoning regs and in particular to accessory dwelling units. The Planning and Zoning Commission subsequently voted to opt out of that legislation. We then went to the E C D Committee of Common Council to have them pass that on to the common council for a vote to finalize the opt out. And they would like to see the Planning and Zoning Commission actually adopt the language prior to having the council hold their vote to opt out. So we put together our language. Essentially, there's three big changes, which come down to allowing them to detach structures. And then I guess the, the square footage remaining the same, the seven hundred square feet. And I guess, I mean, really, that's the biggest two changes. We're, we're keeping the, the parking standard the same at one additional parking space per unit. And then what we have proposed to do is no longer have this zone specific. So if, if you have a single family house in whatever zone in the city, you are allowed to have an accessory dwelling unit. The current regulations as written, which were written back in the eighties, they only allow you to have an accessory dwelling unit either within or attached to your house. And the restrictions are pretty limiting, which is why I think we've, we've seen so few applications come in. So again, our regulations as proposed under these, the, the new act would allow for up to a seven hundred square foot detached accessory dwelling unit to be constructed on all lots where the primary use is a single family house. We lowered the set rear and side setbacks down to ten feet. And then we also had a front setback that maintains the location of the existing house. Meaning if you have a front setback of thirty feet and your house is located at forty, then the front setback for your A D U is forty feet. The idea is we don't want you to be putting accessory dwelling units in front of your house because at the end of the day, they're supposed to be accessory to your house. For height standards, we went to a maximum height of twenty feet depending on the location. And then one other point, which I'm sure we'll get discussed tonight, is an owner occupancy requirement. We, under the current regs and under the proposed, we did include an owner occupancy requirement. The idea being is that we didn't want corporate landlords or absentee landlords from buying up single family housing, houses. Um, the idea being is that, uh, we, we didn't want corporate landlords or absentee landlords from buying up single-family housing, houses, putting accessory dwelling units up and then collecting to rental incomes. We were kind of hoping that this would benefit, um, you know, Norwalk homeowners. Um, there, there, I mean, the, the difficulty in it is, you know, it, it could be a roadblock to, you know, it could prevent some, someone from wanting to actually do this. And it's difficult for staff to enforce. I mean, really, the only way for us to do it is, um, complaint, a complaint, or if we see somebody renting out, uh, their accessory dwelling unit or their house, and we find out that they don't live, the, the property owners doesn't live there. So it's kind of a, a hard thing for, for city staff to, to keep an eye on. So, you know, given that, um, you know, we're, we're, we think as far as the size and the, um, owner occupancy requirement, you know, I think there's flexibility on that. I mean, personally as staff, if you allow a thousand square feet versus seven hundred square feet, you know, we don't have a preference. I think with seven hundred square feet, what you'll see is maybe one-bedroom accessory dwelling units or studio units. If you go up to the thousand, you might start seeing two-bedroom units, maybe even a three-bedroom unit. Um, at the end of the day, you're, you're, you're capped at the height that we've proposed and you're capped at the coverage on your lot. So, you know, there's other things in place that are gonna limit how big these are going to be. And the cost as well, you know, the bigger that you go, um, the more expensive it's gonna be. So, so they're all factors that, that come into play. Um, as far as location and height, I think we're, we're comfortable with, with what we've proposed as far as the height and the location. Um, I think twenty feet for maximum height gives you plenty of flexibility. Um, you can fit two floors, you can fit a loft. Um, there's, there's ways to do, uh, you know, basements and, and things like that where twenty feet gives you, you know, a sufficient space for an accessory apartment. Um, and then for the, the location on the lot, we, we think, uh, you know, making it at the same or further back than the primary dwelling is, you know, in good practice and sort of, you know, the best urban planning standards. Usually you want your primary use to be the focus of your property and the accessory uses to be off to the side or in the back. Um, so I just kind of pulled some images, uh, staff, we sat in on a presentation from AARP that was made to, uh, CCM. Uh, and they included these images. And as you can see, we think our, what we've proposed complies with this. You know, you see in yellow, the accessory dwelling units. They're all either located to the side or to the rear of the primary house, uh, primary use, which is the single-family house. And then again, this is an image from Desegregate CT, who is, uh, really the ones who spearheaded Public Act Twenty-one dash twenty-nine. And, um, again, you see that ADUs, they are either, you know, attached to the house behind or detached from the house and behind it, or attached to and behind the house. Um, so with that, I mean, there's not much else for us to go into. We could start parsing through language if you'd like, or, um, just open it up to the public. And then, uh, if you guys have any questions as well.
Brian, I have, uh, two, uh, one, one a concern, the other one, um, uh, maybe a suggestion. Uh, I've, I've, I've always been opposed to, uh, the freestanding, uh, units. I think that when we require it to be a part of the existing building, um, it has, uh, clearly a lower impact, uh, on the community. Whereas if it's freestanding, I think it has, um, a potentially greater impact, uh, on the community. Um, so my recommendation would be, uh, that we, we go back to, uh, the standard we had before where, uh, it's part of the existing building. Uh, the, the, uh, second, uh, issue, um, and, and that, that's the one of enforcement. Um, couldn't we build into this, um, some very substantial fines uh, as a way of discouraging before they occur, um, uh, someone from buying the property and then, uh, renting it out to two separate people a- as opposed to requiring the owner occupancy. Um, uh, you know, I mean, really substantial fines, uh, you know, several hundred dollars a day, for example. Uh, it, it, it seems to me setting it up, uh, to discourage makes more sense than trying to act, uh, after, after the fact.
Yeah, so I, um, for the fines, I mean, we're limited to what the, the state statutes allow us to, to find people when in violation, which is the hundred and fifty dollars a day. You, you know, it's hard for us because, um, if we do get a complaint or somehow find out that, uh, there's not an owner occupancy requirement, um, you know, we have to, to somehow verify that. Um, we aren't, we, we aren't the building department or fire department or health department who can sort of demand to get onto a property. You know, we have to ask for permission to get in and we need the verification. So I think that's where the issue comes in. Overall, I think speaking with zoning staff, they, they think the enforcement portion of the owner occupancy requirement is, is really difficult. Um, and something that's always been an issue in the past. And then for the, for the detached structures, um, I, I mean, I think that the push that the state has made clear is that they, they would like to see them in, in detached structures. And not that that really influences our decision. Um, you know, I think, you know, as a planner, I think it's, it's good to, to allow them in detached. It's sort of the way that the, uh, urban planning's going and other communities have started to, to adapt for different types of housing. Um, and then just keeping the back of your mind that if, I would, I would think that if, if we don't go the direction of allowing them in detached structures, um, that common council, you know, still has the, the power to opt into the legislation. So I, I think if we go the route of allowing, not allowing them in detached, then I think, you know, common council would likely opt into the, the legislation.
Well, at, at, at least on the issue of, uh, the fines, a, a hundred and fifty dollars a day is fairly substantial. Are we still going to maintain, uh, an annual affidavit from the owner? That says that they are, uh, the owner occupant?
Yeah, so I mean, it, it depends. If you, if you want to keep the owner occupancy requirement, then you can keep the annual affidavit requirement. If the owner occupancy requirement goes away, then I don't see, you know, the, the point of requiring the affidavit, um, any longer. I mean, that's really the, the only verification that we have to, to verify that there's an owner occupant on the, on the property.
Galen?
I think the fact that we require owner occupancy is enough to prevent corporate buyers or investors from buying single-family homes and then putting an accessory develop, accessory dwelling unit on the property and renting both of them. You know, you don't start out to violate the law. That doesn't make any sense. I think there are situations where you could have inadvertent violations, you know, like a, an owner passes away and their heirs own the property, but they don't live there. And it takes sometimes quite, quite a period of time to get, you know, an estate, uh, probated and get the, uh, property sold or et cetera. And for fines to accumulate under those circumstances would really be egregious, I think. I, I think that complaints really are sufficient. If you see, if neighbors see, oh my gosh, these people sold their house, they're still an accessory dwelling unit, now they're renting both sides. I think the neighbors will complain. You know, Mike's made it clear that neighbors are not happy with absentee landlords. And, uh, I think that's really sufficient. I would be opposed to, uh, excessive fines and I would be opposed to an affidavit, frankly. Also, I am certain that the council, I'm not certain because, you know, nobody can be certain of anything, but I would bet my bottom dollar the council would opt in if we don't allow se- you know, separate structures. You know, the whole point of this legislation is separate structures. If the council wasn't concerned about that, they would have opted out when we recommended it and left it to our judgment. They obviously didn't feel that they trusted our judgment entirely. So, you know, I, I think that would be unwise. That's my comment.
Uh, Mike? So I agree with Galen and, uh, I think we need to stay with detached. allowable. And I'm, uh, also concerned with eliminating owner, uh, requirement, owner occup- owner occupying, owner occupied, uh, principal dwelling in that, um, there's, uh, a trend in areas where housing is in a crisis and it could be argued all of Connecticut is now in a housing crisis where some, uh, obviously are the housing prices and housing costs are an indicator of that. But also many argue that our economy is held back because of a lack of workers and that, uh, because it's so expensive to live here, uh, that companies will think twice before locating to Connecticut uh, if housing is too expensive for most of their staff, except for the highest earners. And so in, in the, uh, effort of desegregate Connecticut, I, I think the goals are noble. I agree with them. I think detached is fine. Uh, I do, uh, I, I am afraid of Airbnb, uh, being, uh, you know, used in these, uh, ADUs, uh, by corporate, uh, uh, entities and, uh, which it does happen in resort towns and towns where housing is, uh, at a premium. Uh, and, and there's a shortage of housing, uh, where the Airbnb does not provide affordable housing or housing for people that need it, uh, lo- local folks. It's for transit. So I, uh, I would stay with the language and the current bill. I support it. Uh, and I mean, the current, uh, uh, text, uh, excuse me, losing, I'm at a loss for words in the current proposal. Thank you.
May I? Or, uh, Jacklun first? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, JJ.
Hi, okay, so, um, I have two comments on the, the regs. Um, the first one is, is that I noticed that it was limiting the, um, the occupancy to six months, like at a minimum, and I was thinking it could be like a year, a yearly lease.
Um, Ryan?
So, yeah, so that, that re- six, again, six months flexible changeable number, it's in there to prevent Airbnbs. It's to put some sort of longer duration on a, on a rental for the ADU.
Thank you. And the second thing is, um, in order to erect, um, the, the ADU, wouldn't they need to register the dwelling with the Department of Buildings?
Yes.
And so wouldn't that?
Yeah, so you, yeah.
So wouldn't that be a way to regulate and enforce whether or not the, the way that is being used?
Um, so you would have to get, yeah, your zoning permit, building permit, um, either health department, WPCA, um, sign off. Um, ultimately, at the end of the day, once they inspect, um, you know, they're, they're really looking at the, the technical stuff of the, the building and we're kind of the use, um, folks and, and P and Z. Um, so, uh, you know, we're the ones who are, who are the, in charge of making sure that it's being used properly, um, not necessarily the building department.
Okay, I mean, what about the fire department to make sure that everything is intact as far as safety?
So typically the fire marshal's office, they, um, only get involved with multifamily. So anything that's less than three units, uh, fire marshal does not look at.
Oh, thank you for that.
Steve?
Uh, yes, I agree with the chairman's thoughts about detachable accessory apartments, but I do agree with Mike as well. Uh, Muschak, the way it is now is, um, homeowners need support. Um, the average meeting age in Norwalk is forty plus. And with these regulations that were put in, in order today or in the future, will dictate how we're gonna look in twenty years. Um, so I think the principal dwelling is gonna dictate the accessory apartment. And it comes down to support of housing, whether it be a nanny, babysitter-in-law, mother-in-law, father-in-law. The detachment is more like a connection to your extended family. And I feel that Norwalk has the capacity to, to deal with accessory apartments. What we need to do is dictate the parking. How is the safety looking like when those leave and enter these units or these dwellings or these properties? And I think as a city, we could do that. We can handle it. We're like the, the fifth or sixth largest city in Connecticut. I think we could do it. I think it's up to us to showcase how we could do it properly. So my ears are open and I just want to follow you all lead to this and I'm looking for something that makes sense.
Richard? Richard, you're muted.
I would like to say that I am vehemently opposed to freestanding, um, ADUs for a number of reasons. Um, I think the proposal of having them in B-zone, um, is, uh, I don't want to say ridiculous, but the lots are so small in the B-zone that to have, um, another building on it with another parking space, um, is just not gonna work. My experience with the, especially with the older subdivisions in the B-zones is that all of the houses are made with one-car garages and nobody has one car anymore. And there's gonna be no place to park and it's gonna be, um, too much crowding in those areas. As far as the A-zones are concerned, I know that there are larger properties, but most of the A-zone lots, um, are on streets that don't allow for parking on the streets. So to allow an accessory apartment, freestanding accessory apartment building with one parking space is just going to, um, invite parking violations. And then the other thing, which I haven't heard anybody, um, address, has to do with, well, maybe it's because of my experience as a real estate attorney, but almost every subdivision that I have been involved with in Norwalk has a deed restriction that says that you're only allowed to have one single-family residential unit on a lot. And I know the zoning department doesn't need to get involved in private deed restrictions as far as granting a subdivision. Uh, but the reality is, this is not for a subdivision. This is for an existing single-family lot. And we are telling people that they can violate it. And I don't know what's gonna happen if I want to put an ADU on my lot and the people next door to me don't want it. I'm gonna be in court. And then the last thing that I wanted to say is that, um, you know, Norwalk, it, it, it's kind of like the last thing split into two. Norwalk, um, already exceeds fairly substantially the affordable, uh, housing requirement in the state. So I don't really buy into, um, this, this is going to create more affordable housing because I don't think it will. And the reason I don't think it will is our, my next point. And that is how expensive it costs to build anything these days. If somebody is gonna build like on my lot, which has got septic, um, I have either got to make arrangements to connect to the city sewer or I've got to make arrangements to substantially upgrade my septic system. That's expensive. To say that this is gonna create more, uh, affordable housing, nobody is gonna give these properties away after they make the investment, give these apartments away, I should say, after they make the investment necessary. And as far as helping people stay in their houses because of the supplementary income, my next question is this. What about the tax department? What's gonna happen when another rental unit is placed on a property? Does, does everybody think that the taxes are not gonna increase? They are. So I don't see where accessory freestanding units benefit anybody. And I think that it's, um, having to put a, a, a dwelling unit on every square inch in Norwalk is, is not, um, in anybody's best interest. I mean, I know this is gonna sound sarcastic, but when I was thinking about this, um, this whole meeting that we were gonna have, I can't believe that I've lived in Cranberry for nine years now, but I went to, uh, Cranberry Park for the first time in my life last week with the dog. And I was walking around and I went home and looked up online and I believe- And I was walking around and I went home and looked up online and I believe Cranberry Park is two hundred and seventy eight acres. And I thought to myself, you know, you can cut seventy eight acres off there and put a hundred ADUs. On there based on what we're talking about, but nobody wants to give up the open space. And I don't want to give the open space up where I live. Sorry. So I'm not going to vote for it. And I hope the common council hasn't made up their mind already like.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something, Mr. Chairman?
I saw Tammy's hand first. So Tammy and then Steve.
I can defer to you if you want to respond to Mr. Rowena. No. Okay, all right, I'll go. Thank you, Lou. Next time, Steve. I I think this is a good conversation that we're having and I have a lot of thoughts on this. I agree that the B and the C zones, they're already overcrowded as it is. So these ADUs probably fit best in the A zones. I see this as. A conversion process, not somebody's not going to go out at three hundred or four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. And build some new ADU. It's just, it's kind of cost prohibitive. But if you have a garage that has an upstairs and you can convert it to an apartment, you have, you know. Whether it's a freestanding garage or a garage that's attached to your house, I've seen plenty of houses that have had. Attached garages converted to living space, so somebody could do that at perhaps not so prohibitive a cost. And that's where this might work in our town and. People will get creative basement apartments that they're not using, you know, maybe somebody's living in a big house. And they don't need all of this space and they'll somehow convert the back half or the lower level. Of course, they'll have to get a permit. The building department. So that part can be regulated. I think it's extremely difficult. To ask either planning and zoning or the building department to know who's living in somebody's house. It's private property. They don't have to let anybody on. You can't, that's hard to regulate. You can certainly see if there are too many cars in the driveway. You know, maybe there are too many people living there, but we see that more in the B and C zones and cars parked on the front yard, that kind of thing. I. I just see. Some of Richard's points, I've thought about this too. If somebody adds an ADU, if they're on septic. I mean, much of Cranberry and Silvermine are on septic, but those parts of town have the space. Maybe somebody has the barn in their backyard. So I I'm a little bit all over the place on this, and I think it really needs to be further thought out. And how do you, how do you get there? You know, we put this size restriction based on some apartment sizes and whatnot. But it's not an exact science. What if somebody comes to planning and zoning and they have a garage apartment and it's nine hundred square feet? Are they going to be denied? Or do they just cut off the two hundred square feet and say, nope, you can only convert seven hundred of this to this ADU? Well, that might be perfectly acceptable and livable at nine hundred square feet. And maybe it's in a nice A zone and they have a parking space and they might even have, you know, parking space in the garage. So I think there's a lot of detail that's kind of hard to regulate on this. But I'm willing to try somewhere, but I don't, I don't think it should be in the smaller zones in the B and C and D zones.
Go ahead, Steve. Yeah, so.
And and then Galen.
Maybe this is great for you all. My house is at Seven Roosevelt Street. I have a detached two car garage on my lot. I could probably subdivide it or something. My mother in law is seventy one, my mom is seventy one. I never thought about having a detached accessory apartment. But very drive by my house at Seven Roosevelt Street, you might be able to see how my lot looks. And I'm saying that now because the comments I'm hearing is like, it's 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 a spectrum of different thoughts. I would say that my property is probably not similar to many properties in my zone. But if I had an assessed detached accessory apartment, it will work out because I have two cars I could park, which is right now. In front of my garage is a two, two car detached garage with a loft already. I don't have a sewer hookup to it. I have electricity there because I could turn my light on to my garage and walk across my backyard. But it's not on my back of my lot, it's on the front of the lot on Persian Street. I would say my property is maybe unique. So I don't know if if I have twenty people or owners that can relate to me. Because my neighbors, they don't have that because I'm on a corner with Roosevelt and Persian. Wait, I look at my property, Mr. Chairman and Steve and Brian. I don't see where there will be a problem with parking or cars parked up. I'm not thinking about doing it for my mother or my mother in law. But if they got ill in five years and I didn't want them to be in my household. This is off the record, right?
Sorry, it's all recorded, Steve.
Not anymore.
My wife is not listening to me because she's upstairs, but like to walk twenty paces over to a detached garage. I think the only person. On this. Zoom would be Mike Mueschek. He came by once, maybe four or five years ago to look at it, but. I have a property that I have a two door detached garage. I could probably subdivide my lot. I like my space like we all do, like Richard mentioned before, he's in Cranberry. But I would say we should look into this. For my reason, you know, I didn't put this together for you all to look at, but listen to you all remarks. I was kind of shocked. Maybe we should look at other property owners and see how they could work out their property or their lot. So I give staff. The choice. Come by, see how it looks. Seven Roosevelt Street, Norwalk. Take a look. Steve, Brian. And maybe I might be the poster lot for this detached concept. That's all.
Galen.
Yes. First of all, I I want to say that I really got, I don't have any idea what the council would do. But I doubt if we don't go forward with the detached units. I mean, I I would imagine the reason they didn't opt out when we presented to them in the first place. Was they wanted to see what we do and. There'd be no point in seeing what we do if they didn't want to have attached accessory dwelling units, number one. Number two, a lot of the. Difficulties that Richard has with this and. That Tammy has with this are really handled by the building department. You know, when the building department comes out, they have to, they have to permit it. And if they're. You know, isn't. Proper parking that they won't permit it, you know, there's. You know, you're not going to have. ADUs springing up all over the place. That are approved by the building department that don't. Make sense. You know, the building department isn't going to. Allow. I'm not being really articulate, but I I think a lot of the problems are handled by the fact that it has to be permitted.
And the setbacks too, Galen, too.
So in a in a B zone, you know, you've got the setbacks, et cetera. It may not be possible to do any accessory dwelling unit. They're very expensive. I don't think they're going to spring up all over Norwalk, as you point out. I wish more would be spring up in Norwalk, but I doubt very much that those spring up all over Norwalk. This is just allowing for the possibility.
Ellen, my my only point in bringing all of that stuff up was the cost. That it would, like you just said, that it would have to be done legally, the building department would have to give the permit, et cetera. And my point was the cost. So they weren't going to be given away as as low income housing. But my 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 feeling, I believe I said this the first time that we talked about this was that. If the eight, if a freestanding ADU were to come before the commission on a special permit application. I wouldn't be, I I would still not like it, and I don't know whether I would vote for it or not, but I might vote for it. If there was a special permit application that was required. So at least you could get input from the other neighbors and. The commission could decide, you know, whether it fit in the neighborhood or not, whether it met all of the requirements. And I sincerely sincerely believe that one parking space is not enough. You know, I I have been consistent in that on the on the.
Apartment buildings.
Applications that we've had other than TOD stock because that's a different animal. But anyway, okay, I'm not going to say anything else.
It's one parking unit for the accessory dwelling unit. Have the requirements for two parking spaces for the home.
But what happens if there's two people living in the unit? What happens if the unit or the unit tenant decides to have a guest over? There is no parking allowed on my street. Except, of course.
But there. As I say, you know, I don't think they're going to spring up all over and I. With seven hundred square feet, I don't think you're going to get very many. Families in these units where there's.
Which are going to get two people.
You know, you know what?
JJ hasn't had an opportunity, okay. JJ, go ahead.
Thank, thank you very much. Okay, so my final comment on this is. I don't want perfect to be the enemy of the good, okay? We are in desperate need of housing options. We're not saying that it has to be, you know, the Taj Mahal or it's got to be the Little House on the Prairie. It's got to, it's got to accommodate a housing need that is void. And I think it's not for everyone, not everyone is going to get in line to to erect one of these in their backyard. It's a choice. And then and then the homeowner will have the. The option of renting to whom they feel fit into this unit. Now, I do see here on the regs that you are proposing that is thirty percent is a hundred, a thousand square feet. Maximum size, a thousand square feet or thirty percent of a single family resident, whichever is less. So to Richard, to your point. It it could be, you know, maybe not everybody squeezed into seven hundred square feet.
That's what the state, that's what the state, but we we went with seven.
Right, okay, we want to flex it. I understand. But I'm, I guess my point is is that. I I would hate for perfect to be the enemy of the good. And since we need so many, we need housing options in this growing city that's attracting vibrant people. Bringing their tax dollars to increase, you know, our our profile and our viability in. In in Fairfield County, I feel that this is something that we can monitor as we go along. We can say yay or nay, but we can also be open to the possibility of of of, you know, this new option. And and maybe we can be the model that other cities want to follow.
I said to my real estate broker when I sold my house on on Four Sons Court. Find me a house where nobody's allowed to park in the street. Because I couldn't take it anymore.
Couldn't take.
Don't, I don't. I mean, I know that people's kids stay home after they're thirty five years old now. But you know, having one house with a one car garage and a one car wide driveway that's got six drivers was was crazy. And I, that was a, that's not an exaggeration, but that's how that street was. And and so I live on a street. That you can't park in the road on. The houses are all one acre. I really have no dog in the fight because I got a church on one side and a church across the street. So I'm not going to have ADUs next to me. But I I just think it's a not a good idea unless there's parking and unless the commission at least gets. Some input as to what's being built.
Okay, Steve. And then Mike.
Well, what I would say to the comments is, first of all, I appreciate it all. I I would say everybody's lot is different, you know, listen to you all talk. Everyone likes lot is different. I would say, look at what could happen. Okay, from Monday to Friday, you look at the garbage cans being picked up. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday in Norwalk, Central Norwalk, South Norwalk, do do a trip. You go to South North on Thursday, Friday, you see five garbage cans in front of one house. It's a single family house. Seriously, forget parking, forget what you think about what the neighbors think. And churches and everything else. You have five garbage cans in front of a single family house. That means there's twelve people living there. And I say that only because of this. Do you want to think about parking in front of a house? Look at the garbage cans. Between Monday and Friday, and then you tell me who lives in that house. Forget regulations, forget permits, forget going before all of us. Think of the current use, current use, not need, but current use. That's how I look at things with planning and zoning. Current use, proposed use, future use, and the demands. That's how I look at it. And the way I look at it is this. When you could give someone the opportunity. Or or the thought of doing it the right way, you might see a cool off period. And that's all I want to say about that. That's all.
Thanks, Steve. Go ahead, Mike.
Thanks. This is a good debate discussion, I should say. The point, Richard, you make about low income housing in terms of this providing low income housing. I, you need to step back from that for a minute. I think the intent is to provide higher supply. Because we inherently have unaffordable housing or high housing costs because of lack of supply, because of the general. Supply and demand, role of supply and demand. And I think all experts kind of agree on that, that we just have a. A low supply and a high demand. And that's why housing is so affordable. So I guess inherently more supply, whether it fits a low income rent or not. Is going to inevitably. Take the the heat off the the rising costs of housing. That's that's what all the experts say. I'm not a housing expert, but I think that just providing more supply. In an area that has extreme housing shortage, which we have as well documented, is the goal. I think we need to look at the history of our mother in law apartments, for lack of a better word, that's what we call them, or you know, accessory apartments that we have now. On the books. I think it was put in the record by staff early on that since nineteen eighty four, I think, maybe when it passed, or was it eighty one? They'll correct me, I'm sure Brian or Steve. Clap and correct me, but somewhere like in the early eighties, this, when this law was passed, it was forty years. We had a total of what, two hundred and something units in the whole city built? So I think we can move ahead with this with the confidence in knowing it's not going to be this mad rush. Because of the costs as Richard brought up. And that we can adjust as needed if problems arise. But I agree, could not agree more with JJ in this in this instance, when she said, let's not be. Let perfect be the enemy of the good. I'm willing to move this forward. I I I'm also willing to look at the state standard of a thousand square feet based on what Tammy said. You were arguing actually earlier on about seven hundred is certainly sufficient. I I think, right? You showed us some units, some houses that were actually less than a thousand. But maybe we need to go to that state standard, or is this just going to complicate this process? Because I'd like to move this forward and and vote on it as as presented and get it up to the council. Because we are in a crisis.
Well, I think I think we have to act. If we don't act, the the state law goes into effect. So the very first question to ask ourselves is, is this better than the state regulation? In my, in my view, it is, although I'm concerned. That we have no real mech- mechanism for controlling it.
Mind me, Lou, you mind me, Mr. Chairman? When I had my first born, I was concerned. I was like, what am I going to do with this firstborn child? And it's unknown. And it's unknown. But I had the, the energy, the fortitude, and a commitment. And a lot of things we do with is unknown, Mr. Chairman. But as you mentioned, it's new. But like my firstborn child. It was unknown, but my second child, my son Landon, woo, I dropped his pacifier, I have to wash it off. I was, I'm good. I just put it in his mouth. His binky is in his mouth. And that's how some of the laws we pass. If it's unknown to us, it's okay. Our, our, our thought is, it's new, we're concerned, we're confused. And it's all respectable. But just keep an open mind. If it's new, embrace it. And have a team that's on the same page, and I think we're on the same page, Mr. Chairman.
Um, Lou, if I may.
Sure.
Um, in my capacity as a real estate agent. I go into many houses and I see. Accessory apartments all the time. And the first question out of an agent's mouth to the listing agent is, is it legal? And there is definitely a perception that accessory apartments are illegal. And oh, as long as you take out the stove, they're not going to know. You know, that's the question. And most of them are. Part of the existing structure, but they're in the basement or in a end of the house that is somehow able to be. Cut off from the rest of the house, sometimes in a, in a garage. Structure. So since whether it's nineteen eighty one or nineteen eighty four, the city. Has not promoted any type of accessory apartment. Um, use, I don't think, because I think in my twenty years in real estate. More people would know about it, and they'd say, of course, you can have an accessory apartment, you know, as long as you get it permitted. Maybe the perception from the homeowner is, oh, they're going to raise my taxes and they don't want that. But there are so many existing opportunities in existing houses right now. That I feel if it's just made a little bit more legal or a little bit more accessible, or people are discussing it more. And whatever term you want to call it, ADU, nobody's going to know what that means, whether they're going to call it a granny pod, they're going to think it's like some. Little, you know, uh. Uh, airstream camper or something, but. People have detached garages. In many parts of town, in the older houses, maybe like Steve has. And they have a second floor on them that could probably be converted. And if it's an existing structure, does it matter the size? If you're going to build a new freestanding structure, a thousand square feet, and in those examples that I sent to the commissioners. You can see that a thousand square feet is a whole entire house. So I don't think anybody's advocating that people build a whole full big second house. Because a thousand square feet could even be a three bedroom, two bath house. Um, this is more to be an apartment type situation. Um, and I I think there are opportunities to be had. And I, I mean, Mr. Rowena, I agree his concern. He doesn't want people parking all over the streets. Um, but people do come with cars. But it's the owner's choice. So if it's my property. And I only want one car in the driveway, then maybe I'll only take one tenant. If I have a bigger driveway that can fit my two cars and their two cars, then I say, okay, I'm going to have a two bedroom accessory apartment, or I'm going to allow two people. Nobody's forcing the homeowner to do that, and I don't think because it is private property. The homeowner can pick and choose how many people they want to live in that space. So I think there are a lot of options and um. You know, and I think some of them are already in existence. They just might be more legal.
And I'm, I'm going to cut off uh, the discussion at this point. We can come back to it. Uh, but um, I'd like, I'd like to give the public an opportunity uh, to comment. Then we can come back to it uh, as a group. But I'd like to hear what the the public has to say. Um, with that, Brian, would you explain um, how the public uh, can access this?
Sure. So for members of the public, if you'd like to speak on ADUs, uh, you can use the raise your hand tool to the bottom of your screen. And if you're dialed in on a phone, you can hit star nine.
And please uh, uh, give us uh, your name uh, and your address.
Are you there, Pat? Your mic's not working if you are speaking.
Uh, we're still not hearing anything. Let's, let's go on to the next person. Come back uh, to uh, Pat Verandino.
I may just have to check your um, your input settings for your microphone. Uh, if anyone else, if you'd like to speak on ADUs, you can use the raise your hand tool now, otherwise you could hit star nine if you're dialed in on a phone.
Good evening.
We can, we can hear you.
Um, it's Diane Cece Olmstead Place. Um, I'm curious, as I was sitting here, um. Baiting whether to raise my hand or not, just how many members of the public are actually on this call. Um, and how many Mr. Baker sees that may want to speak. Um, just out of curiosity, um, a couple, a couple of points, um. I just want to say from the beginning that it would be my desire, um, based on. The um, conversation you just had uh, among the commissioners. Um, I enjoyed listening to the debate and also learn, learning from it as well. Um, but based on that, um. And it, um, I I would think that you might want to consider tabling a vote on this until. A future meeting, just because there are a number of questions and concerns. Um, that, you know, seem like maybe they haven't been discussed in the past six months as uh, Mr. Mr. Clapton shared with me that this thing has been around now for six months in basically the same iteration. And um, but at this eleventh hour, when you're possibly going to adopt this new regulation, it seems like there's still. A number of questions and concerns and suggestions as well. Um, and while I agree with with Ms., um, I think it's Ms. Jordan. Um, on two points, I I do agree with her characterization that this is more about housing choices. Um, than it is about affordability and the economics of um, housing. Um, and while I do agree generally with the concept that. Um, you know, don't sacrifice the um, the good for the, you know, for the benefit of the perfect, I do think. That a number of questions have been raised with this and and uh, since. This doesn't have to be adopted, as I understand it, until the beginning of the year. Um, I don't think there should be any pressure on the commission. To um, have an up or down vote tonight, um, rather than September or October. And that will possibly give the benefit to the public who are not in attendance tonight. Uh, for a whole host of reasons, the third week in August. Um, isn't particularly well attended for any public meetings. Um, but they would have the benefit then of watching the Zoom, uh, YouTube of your deliberations. And take into account your questions, comments, and suggestions. Now, before I I make my comments and suggestions, I wonder if I could ask the chair. If Mr. Baker could actually bring up on the screen. Um, not the document that he shared before, which which was relative to the, to the state regulation. But if he could bring up on the screen the actual draft. Um, regulation that's before you tonight. The, the actual one that you'll be voting on and 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 I, because I think I'm looking at something different that I took from the the PNC website. As the new draft regulation that would be effective um, when you pass this. Is that possible? That's the one, okay. Are you able to actually just walk through this quickly? And and maybe highlight anything in here that's actually part of the regulation that you didn't address when you were talking about. Um, the differences now between the state and what the municipal regulation would be? I, I'm sorry, I think I lost the uh, sound here. Can you hear me?
How did, Lou, is that what you'd like, or?
Uh, yeah, and and I just wondered, um, Brian, if you could, I think there there maybe are a couple of items in the actual. Regulation that that they're looking at tonight, um, that possibly you hadn't touched upon.
Well, Brian, I, you know, I don't want this uh, to to go on uh, endlessly. Ms. Ms. Cece um, had ac- I assume had access to this document. And should be able to comment uh, from uh, her own review of the document.
But it, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, what normally happens at public hearing is staff. Um, uh, the applicant, in this case, city staff walks the um, the commission and the public through. Um, the actual application, and in, and in my mind, the application is not the document. That Mr. Baker showed you, the application is the one that he has on the screen now. And I just, I I wanted to be, you know, for the benefit of anybody else in the public that's on here, but for my own benefit. I was hoping to have the time to hop on here tonight and then hear his review of these items. And rather than him go through A through I, I was uh, uh, A through I, I guess it is. Is just suggesting that he be able to point out anything that's in this document that he hadn't addressed when he was using. The other document that he presented to you earlier.
Brian, can.
Particularly burdensome, then forget it, I.
Brian, can you, can you do that um, uh, fairly quickly?
Sure. So uh, the first item would be the accessory dwelling units located on the same lot as the house. Uh, you're look, only allowed to have one. Uh, we touched on that, minimum rental duration, we touched on that for the six months to prevent Airbnb, uh, Airbnbs. Uh, this is kind of boilerplate, you need WPCA or health approval. Uh, locations and yards, so detached, uh, your front step back, we touched on that, it's the essentially. No closer to the front property line in the house, side and rear step backs at ten foot minimum. Uh, and then attached, same as what's allowed for a house. Uh, so for height. Uh, detached is a fifteen foot uh, maximum height when located twenty feet or less from a side of your property line. Maximum height goes up to twenty feet when it's more than twenty feet from a side of your property line. Or attached ADUs, it is the same as the house. Max size, we touched on that, design standards, uh, this is just that the. ADU has to look similar to a house, and it has to be located on a foundation. Uh, we threw in some prohibited structures. We don't want to see trailers as, you know, being used as ADUs, they're supposed to be permanent structures. Uh, we touched on parking, which is the one parking space for the unit. And then procedure for approval, essentially you just need to get a zoning permit, it's administrative approval. And then you file the affidavit to confirm that you live on the property and the minimum rental duration.
I think, thank you for that. And then I have um, a number of questions that I hope staff can answer. Um, and maybe write down and answer, because sometimes at these hearings, um, people like me rattle off questions we'd like answers to. And um, you close a public hearing and they never answer the question, and we don't have the benefit of being heard again, so. Um, one of the questions I have is when you're talking about the maximum size. I think in one of, it was either one of your prior meetings or possibly the planning committee. Um, or whoever else reviewed this. Was there, is is there something in the regulation or an underlying regulation that stipulates a minimum size? There had been some discussion on just how small the unit could be, and I remember someone kind of ridiculing tiny houses and. You know, particularly small studios, so. Um, I I could just ask all the questions if you want, and then you, and then you can answer them, and I'll just close with my own personal thoughts on this. Um, on the design standards, where it says it must, you know, maintain an architectural design. Style and and appearance, and so um, what you just said, Brian, doesn't actually um. In this sentence here, it it must not just look like the house, it says it has to fit the architectural design style. And appearance of the existing single family dwelling that's located on the property. And my question there, and this may be a personal question, is I happen to um, have a couple of. Accessory structures on my property now. Um, my question would be, um, I think you've made. Um, a stipulation in here elsewhere regarding existing structures on the property. And I wondered if architectural design might be something that could be waived. If you have a structure already on your property that otherwise meets every other condition of an ADU. Um, is there an opportunity to actually waive the architectural design and style? Um, so that's my other question. I also had a question on parking. It was clear to me the requirement for the three off-street parking spaces. Um, I don't think that's going to provide any more of a burden or any kind of an issue. With parking, um, given the nature of ADUs. Um, but I do agree um, for the second time in my life with Mr. Rowena. That um, that there is a concern with parking overall, and if you think that. You know, one or one point three parking spaces suffices for. Um, all of the big apartment complexes going up, um, including Cemetery Street. Um, then I wonder why that's not being taken into account here. Um, although I think in this case it's probably plenty. My, my question on here, though, is that. You go beyond stipulating three off-street parking spaces to designate them. You say two spaces per principal dwelling and one space per accessory dwelling unit. And so if it can only be one principal, meaning the single family house, and you can only have one ADU. I wasn't clear why you were stipulating that, wouldn't it just be three spaces? And secondly, it may seem silly, but. Depending on the occupants. Are you defining then that you couldn't have one space for the principal structure? And then two for the accessory unit? So I was a little confused on the wording there. I do share some concern. Um, as much as I, I'll state this now, just so that you all know, I, I am in favor of ADUs. I have always been. Mr. Clapton can tell you I'm a major proponent of ADUs. And it's long overdue that Norwalk consider detached ADUs, because I think it's holding us back. Um, in what Ms. Jordan was talking about with housing choices. Um, but having said that, I do share some concerns with the fact that these wouldn't require. Um, some kind of a permit that allows for notification of abutting um, neighbors. And I'm not sure if there's something in between over the counter and special permit. Um, perhaps staff can address that, but I I do share that concern that suddenly you could wake up. Um, much, much like I guess my neighbors did at one point to um, to find a couple of structures. Um, you know, behind them or next to them. The, um, the other two questions I have are, I'm I'm not really clear. On how folks thought this stuff could be enforced. It seems like a lot of enforcement comes down to, you know, the visual. Um. Um, you know, inspection by neighbors and then neighbors reporting possible violations. Uh, versus something that would be more of a routine. Um, you know, other than yearly um, enforcement. And I think it was Mr. Rowena again, so now I'm going to agree with him for the third time. Um, that raised the point of. How the, how these structures get, get taxed then. Um, so I think you brought up a good point that I hadn't considered either about, I guess, you know, residential. And um, it would be taxed in a different way, whether someone was living in it or not. And I just wonder um, if that might not defeat some of the purpose of having additional stock of housing. That then you could consider as affordable. Um, versus something that may just be for family members. Um, who either is, are, you know, as they're aging, or someone may need caregivers. Or just young adults who want to have their own privacy and space, um, but still be close to home. So um, I will say, I think that's all of my questions. Again, I'm in favor of this, my. Um, my preference would be, though, given your discussion and and other people's opportunity. Um, probably not to vet this in the version that you're talking about tonight. I would just ask respectfully that you table it until September. Give people an opportunity to review all this. And keep the um, public hearing open either for written comments or for brief comments at at a following meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Pat Ferrendino. And I live at 79 George Avenue. Several years ago, we built in addition to the home where my aunt had owned since 1965. She was aging. My parents were also aging. And my family decided to move together with them so that we could care for them in their old age. Both my parents subsequently died in their 90s. My aunt, just this past December, passed away at 98 years old. Remaining in the home now are my wife and myself, both 67 years old. And my son, who's 28 years old. Now, the existing structure would allow us a, an accessory apartment of either 30% of the existing structure or 1,000 square feet, which would, in this case, be less than the, the 30%. The reason I am lobbying for 1,000 as opposed to 700 is for the following. As a potential grandparent who would end up living in an accessory apartment, allowing my son to start his family within the same home and have independence from us would allow us as grandparents a bit more space within an existing structure with very little cost for modifying the existing structure without adding any square footage. And allow us to not only have a bedroom and a living room and a, and a small kitchenette. But also allow me, as I continue trying to work, I have an office. Or perhaps since there's no walkways on George Avenue, it's quite a heavy traffic area. And if we want to exercise, perhaps a treadmill might be appropriate in the house as opposed to trying to walk on the street. Right? As a, as a landlord, if that were the option, 1,000 square feet as opposed to 700 square feet would allow for greater rental income. If we're looking at only a small pension and social security with the increase in tax, and I understand from, from Richard Rowena that, that the tax might go up on this for additional square footage. In this case, there would be no additional square footage in the home. But it would allow us for a little extra income to allow us to get by in our retirement. As for a renter, if you're looking at 700 square feet for either an individual or, or a couple coming in with small space, a bedroom and the same, it would allow, again, for with remote workers today, it'll allow for a separate office space for the individual, which would make it more attractive, more reasonable. And all within the guidelines of existing codes. The parking that Mr. Rowena had addressed. Within our existing lot, we have two permissible plus one additional for the accessory. And, and so there would be no code changes, no, no variances needed in an existing home under an existing structure, but just modifying that structure with the construction of a wall or two, quite frankly, that would allow us the 1,000 as opposed to 700 square feet. The 700 feet is restrictive for no, no apparent reason. So that's, that's what I propose and suggest to the, to the board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else who'd like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool or star nine if you're dialing on a phone.
Cheryl, you're muted.
How's that?
That's better. Thank you.
Cheryl Warner, 34 Cove Avenue. Thank you for the time and the thought that has gone into this, this evening. I can see that you're looking at all aspects. One comment right off the top in the, in the drawings that you had from AARP. I, do you show an attic addition or an attic ADU? I, that, I don't know if I would like that in terms of fire safety and so forth and so on. So I just bring that up going forward. The other comment I would make is no mobile homes are allowed, but what about a modular structure? Is that something that would be appropriate to include as one of the options? Where they can build it on another location and boom it in onto the foundation that's been set up. And I guess really that's all of it. I, I agree with ADUs. So the size of 700 square feet, I lived in a 700 square foot bungalow and it was big enough for me. It had a dining room, living room, workable kitchen, bathroom, of course, bedroom and closets. And, and that was on a two for one. There was a bit larger house on the front of the property. 700 square feet was fine for me. I think for a couple, they would probably want something a little bit larger so they don't trip over one another. Other than that, I thank you for your time. I thank you for the effort and all the comments that were made tonight. Learned a lot from it and I hope that you could put your vote off until a little bit more discussion or information can be digested and rethought. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if anyone else would like to speak, you can use the raise your hand tool now. I'm not seeing anybody, Louis.
Okay, then we'll, we'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Brian or Steve would like to comment on the comments and the questions that were raised by the public?
You want me to go, Steve, or you want to go?
I'll be real quick and then you, you can dig in. I think that I kind of agree with a lot of the comments. I'm very agnostic on the detached units, basically because I don't know how many you'll actually see. I, I mean, I think everybody's point about then not, I, I don't, and I agree with everybody's comment about, I don't think it's going to do much for, on the affordability side. I think my guess is based, and I agree with Dick on the cost or Mr. Rooney on the cost that especially right now with the building costs for the materials that they're going to be very expensive to build one of these units and any rent that you see in one of those units is going to be pretty high, would be my guess. But I think the idea that it's more of a housing choice thing than a housing affordability thing is really the spot on point. So, so I, from that perspective, I have no issue. My concern, and again, I don't, like I said, I don't think you need to vote tonight. If you pushed it off to the next meeting, that, that would be fine too. If you want to think about it, I don't want to wait long. I would be very concerned if, from an enforcement standpoint, just dealing with what the state has offered up. Because I think that the allowances that they give for those for the units that we're talking about on, like a typical single family lot would be really problematic, really noticeable and would be something that really would be impactful in the neighborhood. Whereas I think the modifications that Brian's put together really take that into account and where those kinds of buildings would blend in much better with, with the existing neighborhood as opposed to something that's really right on the property line and can be as tall as a normal house. I think if you did that, then I think you would get a lot of complaints about that. And if, if you, if you miss out on that opt-out window, then your chance to edit things in the future is gone. That's all I have.
All right.
Brian, okay. So quickly I'll answer hopefully most of Ms. Cece's questions. So for maximum size and minimum size, we, we did not propose a minimum size. Building department usually does have codes in place that require minimum room sizes. So we figured, you know, that's fine with us. Design standards, that's not really meant to be something that prevents you from building houses. If you are, you know, converting a garage or putting some, one over your garage, that's fine with us. It's really just in there to, to kind of weed out some, you know, if, if they're coming in with something that's just, does not look like a home or the home on the property, that's kind of the point of that. It's not meant to, you know, prevent you from converting anything to a, to a ADU. Parking, it, it's three spaces. So you have two for your house, one for your ADU. We don't really distinguish who parks where. It's just kind of, I guess, a little bit more detailed than the rest of the parking regs. It's just really saying there's, you know, you have two spaces for your house, which is what's required and one space for the ADU. As far as, you know, administrative approval versus going to the commission. I mean, personally, I think if you start saying, yeah, you can build an ADU, but it has to go to the commission. I think you're going to scare away a lot of people. I think people are looking to, to get these in and out as quickly as they can. So if it's an over the counter permit, I think you're making it easier on folks to, to utilize their property. How structures get taxed, I, you know, that's really for the tax assessor or tax collector. I mean, there's ADUs today that are paying taxes that the, the tax collector or tax assessor is assessed. So I would assume it's the same as that. To Cheryl's questions about modular or manufactured, those are allowed. We're fine with that. Just has to be on a foundation. And then the 1,000 square feet for 700 square feet again. You know, we're flexible on that. I don't think, you know, there's a perfect size, perfect maximum size for this. It's kind of, if you'd like to see studios and one bedrooms, or if you'd like to, to see some that are a little larger. And then let's go through some like, some of the zoning stuff, like if, you know, some of the stuff that was brought up earlier of like C-zone, D-zone, B-zone, where, you know, the concerns with that. So right now, you know, in, in Norwalk, you have a C-zone, which you could have 6,000 square feet of lot area and you could put a two-family house on it. And for some reason, for a B-zone, you need more lot area for that in order to do an ADU, which is, you know, it's, it's kind of silly, you know, why do you need more lot area to do an accessory apartment than you do for a two-family house? But it kind of is in line with that, that if you can already do it, a, a two-family house on a 6,000 square foot lot, then it, it kind of makes sense that you should be able to do an ADU. Lots of limiting factors in place already besides what the regs are going to say, such as tax increases, cost to construct. So, you know, there's a lot of considerations that a property owner has to take into account before they start looking at the regs. For setbacks, so in, in a, right now, if you're in a B-zone, you could build your garage, a 15-foot-high detached garage, six feet off your property line. What we're saying is you can build now, under the proposed regs, you'd be able to build a detached ADU, but it has to be at least 10 feet off your property. So we're actually pushing it back from, you know, the, the impact that you're going to see as, as a neighbor. And then just point, this wasn't brought up, but I think is, is a good point. Is this, this is not increasing the density in the city. This is, you know, you're allowed to do an ADU now. This is just making it easier for you to actually be able to do it, which I think is, is the right direction for the city to go in. I think that is everything that I have.
I'd like to comment on the request that we hold this open for additional comment. We had three people speak this evening. Even if it's possible that people didn't attend because they had to take their kids to college or they had to prepare for the start of school next week, or they had some other reason. If this were something that really moved the community, we would have had more than three people speaking. So I'm not inclined to hold this open for that reason. With regard to vote, to us voting on the matter, I think that's up to the commission. Commission wants to vote on it this evening. That's fine. If you want to wait until our, our next meeting on September 8th, that's also fine with me. That, that's up to all of us. But in terms of ho- holding it open for additional comment, people, it seems to me have had a fair opportunity to come. And I don't believe, could be wrong, but I don't believe we got any written comments on, on, on this either.
There was a email from Richard Bonifat.
Oh, you're quite right. You're right. We did have
Look at Richard.
We, we did, we did have, we did have
And he made some good points.
Right.
We all saw that today.
So with that, I think I saw JJ's hand up a while ago. So please go ahead. You're muted.
Yes, I just want to remind the commission that I'm on vacation from September the 2nd through the 12th. And if we were to push this, I would not be available for a vote. But I will be available for a vote tonight.
And then
Same with Steve. My birthday is September 8th and I was hoping to take a day off.
Well, you can take a day off. You just have to work.
It's coming at night time. Mr. Chairman, you know how I am. My whole life is volunteering. So I would say it's my birthday. So we could do it tonight. It'd be great. If not, it's okay. I'll just follow the lead like I normally do.
Okay.
And then just
Yeah. I just want to say, I don't think it will really serve us to hold it open. I think we've all said what we're going to say and we all understand what the, what the proposal is and I would vote that we vote tonight.
Okay. Nick, did you?
Yeah. So Brian, what's the logic behind requiring the unit to be on a, a fixed permanent foundation?
So it's kind of like, so say, you know, you come in and you get a zoning permit, you know, we're basing that permit based on a specific location that that thing is going to be in. So if, if you're not putting something on, if it's movable or mobile, you know, we're it gets difficult. Like what if you move it, bring it back to your lot and put it in a different space? Do you need to get a new zoning permit? It's kind of just to make sure that what we're permitting complies with the setbacks and
Would that, so would that preclude someone? Cause I imagine if you're trying to do this in a reasonably affordable way, you're buying something prefab that looks like a home, like buying a tiny home, putting it on your property. Is that going to be okay if you don't have like a proper cement foundation? If you have it on like the pylons or whatever, the cement pylons that those usually come with?
Yeah, you probably, you have to put it on some sort of like slab, you know.
You don't have to put on a slab. Do you think that's going to significantly change or reduce people from doing this?
Personally, I don't, I think, you know, the, the tiny home market is kind of a niche market. I think there'll be a few people interested in it, but I don't think it's going to be, you know, make or break for great use.
Gotcha. Okay, that's helpful. And I guess we'll hear about that if we, if people are coming and saying this is a a problem, like that's, I think, the best part about this is that it'll be in our control. If staff starts to hear people want to, are looking to build X, Y, and Z, and they're not able to, we'll be able to, if we want to amend the rules and, and put that in our control, which I think is the most important thing.
Right.
Brian, was there something else you were going to say?
Yeah, I was just going to bring up the, that typical administrative stuff. So our application was referred out to all of our surrounding neighbors. So Westport, Wilton, Darien and Ucanon. We haven't heard anything back from them. It was referred out to Westcog. They reviewed it positively or no, no regional impacts. It was referred to the Harbor Commission, who did not make a finding of inconsistency with the Harbor Management Plan and therefore passed with them. It was referred to the Five Mile River Commission. They didn't make any inconsistent findings with their plans. And lastly, it was referred to deep, and that is actually one that we do have to read into the records. So I'll pull that one up.
Brian, before you pull that up.
Brian, before you pull that up, um, if I may, Lou. The, it seems some, some of the concern. Is around the square footage and and defining that, and I'm wondering if. If we delineate. The seven hundred square feet would be if it was. An addition to a structure or a new freestanding structure. But if somebody is not increasing the footprint of their house, let's say they have. You know, two and a half story house with a fully finished basement. That's walkout in the back and the basement happens to be a thousand square feet and they want to rent it. What would be wrong with that? Because they're not changing. The size of the property.
Tammy, hold, hold on to that thought. Um, I, uh, the way in which I want to, uh, uh, deal with this. Will give you an opportunity to discuss that, uh, length, okay?
Yep, sorry.
Just share this real quick. So this is from Marcy Ballen at the Connecticut Deep. Um, generally, she found it consistent with, uh, the Coastal Management Acts, uh, of the state of Connecticut. Just have that on the record.
Okay. Um, in in order to move, uh, the this forward. We're not going to vote immediately, but is there a motion, uh, to approve? Um, J J, uh, has, uh, well, let me just check. Yeah, J J, you'll be voting on this. J J has moved and it looked like Nick seconded. Um, so let's, let's pull up, uh, the the draft resolution. Okay, uh, so, uh. Is there language in this resolution? Uh, that, uh, a member, any member of the commission would like to change? And, Richard?
Am I muted? No. There's a, uh, provision in there that talks to, um. The zoning enforcement officer being able to grant this permit. Over the desk permit, we usually call it, or over the counter.
Hmm.
Um, I would like to change that to read that. Um.
That is, uh, as you can see, it's I A.
I A, yes. So I would like to change that to read that applications for accessory. Accessory dwelling units within the existing dwelling. Shall be subject to approval by the zoning enforcement officer. And applications for an accessory dwelling unit freestanding. Should come before the commission on a site, on at least a site plan review.
Is there a second to that motion? I'll, I'll, I'll second, I'll second the motion. So, uh, let's discuss it.
So I just want to be clear with what Mr. Rowena said. If somebody's building. A totally new freestanding unit, they should come before. The planning and zoning commission with a special permit?
No, for a site plan review.
May, may I make a point, I, because I, I don't. I, I don't think that the site plan process is going to do you any good, because. Site plan itself by kind of case law and by definition is you're really looking at, um. You know, making sure it conforms to the regulations, and if it conforms, you really don't have a lot of leeway.
Yes, you're right. And so I would change that to say, uh, special permit.
Comment on that would be, and this is just my opinion and not meant to really be anything beyond that is. I think the the intent of the regulation, the, at least the way Desegregated Connecticut is proposing it is to try to. Make this as streamlined as possible, so otherwise, if you get in. More than likely, what will happen with these special permits, if if you see any of them or see many of them. Is the neighbors are going to be opposed, and then you're going to get into that fight every time.
Um, if it's a, uh, requirement for a special permit, I will withdraw my second. Uh, is there anyone else who will second this?
If, question Lou, if it met all of the current zoning standards, then why would you need the special permit?
Richard, um, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, um. This would be the zoning code, that they would have to come before a special permit. And to give the neighbors an opportunity to have some input, to make sure. That the proposed dwelling was, um, in conformance with the. Uh, look of the property that was there and the character of the neighborhood, et cetera. So I don't think, you know, my, I, 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 I've beaten this to death. I mean, you know, you don't have to be a fortune teller to read the tea leaves here. Uh, but, you know, I just think that, uh, you know, had, having, you know, some standards for. The freestanding A D U is not an unreasonable request to make of anybody that's going to build a second house on their lot. But I just leave it at that.
Galen?
Second, there's no point.
Uh, I think that I would disagree with. That I think first of all, we have enough of a workload adding another thing that requires.
Galen, there's no second to the motion, so it's irrelevant.
Oh, okay.
All right, is that correct?
Let's, there's a second, I guess.
Lou withdrew his second.
One more time, is, uh, anyone willing to second this?
Can you just please repeat what it is, Mr. Rowena is proposing again?
He's, he's, he's proposing, uh, that a, a separate building on the property. Would require a special permit. As opposed to a, uh, simply putting, uh, the, uh, A D U in as part of your, your own house.
I have, I think it has merit. Um. But can I just ask another question?
Sure.
So, the way the language is written right now. Somebody would just have to, if they wanted to build a freestanding structure. On a property that already has one. They just have to meet all of the, the current setbacks in that zone. Right?
Yes, setbacks height. That's about it.
Okay, I've known of cases where people have, neighbors have fought over a treehouse. Um, that, you know, sounds, sounds so ridiculous, but a large treehouse that upset the neighbor. So, I'm wondering. If somebody's going to put in a whole another house. Um, is that taking away their property rights? Um. Regardless of whether it added to the planning and zoning workload, I don't think is really pertinent. It's what is it preserving, you know, what the P O C D is trying to. Guide us. So. I think I would vote, I would second Mr. Rowena's proposal.
Okay. So we have a second, uh. Any, uh?
I'll make a com- I'll come back a comment on that.
Go ahead.
I, I totally, uh, am sympathetic to the argument. That Richard is making, uh. I, I am, uh, but I also. Agree with the state intent or the intent of the state regulation to streamline the process, which Steve Pleppit mentioned. Um, and, uh, to build more housing and a special permit. There is a big expense involved. Usually you have to get a lawyer. Uh, because it's, it can get complicated. I know you need an A two survey. Uh, you need a traffic study, which could be waived. But there's a whole list of things that you need that add to a cost involved, which is just really an impediment. So I, I, I would be opposed to it, but I'm just throwing that out there that. A special permit is a, uh, a financial burden. For an applicant.
Yes.
Brian, would you, would you be able to get an over the counter permit for one of these without an A two survey?
Today, um, no, you couldn't, because you need to verify all of your lot requirements meet the the standards. So you'd have to give us a survey. And under the proposed regs, you, you still have to give us a survey, because you have to show us where it's going and that everything complies.
Okay, Steve had.
Thanks for clarifying.
But respectfully.
You had a comment and then Galen had a comment.
Actually, did. So, Mr. Rowena. Um, the current changes or the proposed amendment. What's concerning you the most? The parking on the street? The congestion on the street? What is it?
All of it. But I think that a, a special permit application would at least ensure that the best. That possibly can be done is being done.
Okay, so in that case, Mr. Rowena, I would agree with you. With special permit. So if it's detached, special permit, if it's attached, not special permit, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go with that.
Okay, Galen?
Uh, I think that we can rely on the zoning staff. Who will do the over the counter review to see to it that the unit complies with all of the requirements of the statute. Uh, and I agree with Mike Musick. That adding to the cost of get, of applying for a special permit. Which there is no question that applying for a special permit would significantly add to the cost. Of doing the, uh, accessory dwelling in it. I think that's an unnecessary burden for us to put on this process. So I would be opposed to it. But I think that the over the counter review that is done in the zoning department is done in a very thorough way. They'll see to it that the setback is proper. They'll see to it that it meets the style of the house. They'll see to it that, uh. You know, the height is what the, what the zoning. What this regulation requires, and I think a special permit is unnecessary.
I would, um, I would say that, uh, if someone is building a separate structure of seven hundred. Uh, square feet. They're looking at, uh, a cost that's going to run into several hundred thousand dollars. And that, uh, the, uh, added additional costs, say, for hiring. Uh, an attorney for something like this. Is not that significant in terms of the overall cost.
I'm sure if that's true.
Like, hundred dollars an hour.
The cost, it's not even the cost of a refrigerator to get a survey. It's two thousand dollars. If somebody wants to go to the trouble of building a whole new place. They're going to be spending a lot more than the cost of the permit and the survey.
Right.
Drop in the book.
I think you're over. Overthinking that the cost that some, there are nice looking things that are prefab that you can buy that are not. Three hundred thousand dollar new homes.
Right.
Yep.
I, 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 I saw a, a, a amazing assortment through Costco. Prefab, you get a slab, drop it on, done.
All right.
Fifty grand.
I think there's been, there's been enough, uh, discussion of this item. Uh, let, let's go to a vote. Uh, just on this item. Um. All those in favor of, uh, the language that, um.
Mister Chairman, who's, just want to be, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm, 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 I'm sorry, uh, it's Mr. Patches and, uh, Jordan Byron.
And we're only voting on the requirement for a special permit. Not on the, not on the.
That's right, just, just the language that's being suggested, uh, by Richard. Uh, all those in favor, I think we can do this with a show of hands. All those.
Do a roll call, please.
Pardon me?
We do a roll call only because it's harder for me to see who's. Who's voting and not voting. I'm sorry.
Diana should not be commenting on this. Let's do this with a show of hands. All those in favor?
Of the special permit.
Right, that's five and, uh, posed. One, two, three. It looks like four. Am I counting correctly?
Oh, we know if we roll call.
All right, yeah, all right. We'll, we'll go back to a roll call. I apologize. Um. Uh, Brian?
Uh, sure. So this is required special permit for detached.
Right.
Mister Ferguson?
Yes.
Uh, Mister Patches?
Yes.
Mister Cantor?
Absolutely not.
Uh, Miss Jordan Byron?
No.
Miss Wells?
No.
Miss Langallis?
Yes.
Mister Rowena?
Yes.
Mister Musack?
No.
And Minister Schuman?
Yes.
I think you have five to four.
Let's, 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 uh, give those opposed an opportunity to speak, uh. Uh, on, on their, those who are opposed. Let's do the roll call for them as well.
What are you asking for, Lou?
I'm, I'm asking for those who are opposed, uh, to simply state that.
You know what? A recount, let's do a recount, Lou.
No, we don't, we don't need a recount. We know, we know who's voted.
But Lou, I'm curi- I'm just curious why you did not, you pulled your second of the motion. When he changed it to special permit. But then you voted for it.
You know why? Because, Mike, because I thought that they changed. A document just now, Mike.
No, not, not you, I meant Lou. Did I say Steve? I meant Lou.
I, I, I was.
Sorry, I wasn't addressing you, Steve.
I was ultimately persuaded by, uh, the arguments that I heard.
So let's change it. Let's do it again.
I don't think we need to. I think we're, we're all set on that.
Well, we just, we just set up a, uh, a, a, an impediment that the whole state regulation was.
Exactly.
Yes.
Exactly.
We have voted on this. Let's, let's now move on.
What's done is done.
The document.
It's not done, it's done, like.
I beg your pardon, Nick?
I don't know, I'm missing, I understand, Darius just said it's what's done is done. I don't think it's as simple as it's done is done, like. I mean, as someone, I mean, by putting this impediment in, I'm now leaning to voting no against everything of our own relation and going back to Hartford's rules.
And let the state regulate.
Let the state regulate.
I, I think the state, I think we ought to go to the really restrictive state.
Exactly.
If we're unwilling to compromise here in this body.
Agreed.
Something so simple by required, by allowing staff to make a judgment on an application.
You're right, Mike.
A very clear.
And I will vote no against this.
You're right, Mike. Mike, you're right, Mike. I thought about that twenty minutes ago, Mike. Mike, your thought, twenty minutes ago, I thought about the same thing, Mike, seriously, like.
All right, let's, let's move on. Um, take us, uh, Brian, back to the document. Is there any other, uh, or are there any other language changes?
Uh, Steve, Steve, this is to Steve Ferguson. I can't tell by your reaction to Mike. Are you saying?
Yes.
The special permit piece is, is, is no longer something that you are in support of?
Nick, well, I'll do, well, I'll do respect, Nick. I blanked out with my wifi for like two minutes and I missed something. And I'm like, what did I miss just now?
So. So, I, I think this is an important thing.
Yeah, I, so from staff perspective.
Give Steve Ferguson some clarity on what he voted on.
Please.
So, so Steve, what the suggestion or the rec, what Richard had proposed for A D U, so there's the difference between the attached and the detached. Attached would be over the counter permit. Detached, you'd require a special permit, which goes to the zoning commission, requires public hearing. Uh, special permit application. So that's what the vote was held on.
And what, and what you missed was a discussion of the burden of cost.
Yeah, well, forget the burden, after that, after, after the burden of cost, what happened after that?
Steve, you voted in favor of that.
Yes, but Lou. Um, outside of the burden of cost, are we going for the detached accessory apartments or not?
Well, it would be a special permit requirement based on that vote.
Right, Richard, Richard is proposing. That, that, that there be an extra layer of compliance. For anyone who wanted to erect a detached structure, that they would have to go through additional costs. Additional parking is, uh, um, um, I'm, I guess. You, like, all these different things on top of just the erection of the, of, of the unit itself. That would add like another three thousand dollars to the cost.
Let's, Rick, let's, Rich, say that. Let's, I didn't hear him say that. Let him say that.
I didn't say that.
Okay.
I said that there was a special, there should be a special permit requirement. Um, I said that. There would have to be a survey done, whether it was over the counter or a special permit. Um, frankly, I. I don't see a lot of people hiring lawyers to come in for this special permit. I mean, we've done at least three or four that I can recall in the last two weeks when. People represented themselves on a lot more complicated issues than this. And whatever additional cost is involved. And whatever additional cost is involved, I think that the neighborhood is entitled to hear it.
Okay, I heard you, thank you, okay, so let's go now.
Right, and, and, and the debate on the other side was that it is not only is a, is a financial cost to the to the person who wants to have the additional dwelling on their property. It's also a burden of, a burden of duty on the office itself. The zoning enforcement, on, on the zoning office, as well as the commission, as well as the time and effort it takes to push this forward.
Okay, understood, thank you.
And then also, all the neighbors that are but and are across the street will be notified to come in and say they are opposed. And, and basically prevent any ADU from being built, probably.
And Mike, Misha.
And that's the point, that's the point, we would say, why are we even doing this?
Right, because it becomes, it becomes, it, it becomes a NIMBY issue, not in my backyard.
And, and Lou Scholman was so dead set against this in the first motion, but that he voted for it when it.
You know why, you know why, because, because this is an important issue right now, Mike. And Jacqueline, this is a very important issue, so let's be mindful of the, of the issue before us. So, I agree with the chairman, but he needs us to make sure his decision is properly placed, that's all.
I think, I say we go back to the state, we stop wasting time on this, and we'll just, we'll just.
Mike, we're not doing that, we are.
We're not going to vote on this with this special permit.
Yes, we are going to vote, we are going to vote on this document, you can approve it or not approve it.
Agreed.
But we're going to vote on it, now let's, let's continue to move forward with whether there are any other changes.
Well, it's not clear to me, does Steve know that he?
Chair, Mr. Chairman, let me re-vote, because my wifi was off, can I, may I re-vote, please?
Yes, I think that, that's fair, let's um uh, Brian, take us, take us back to uh our original screen. And let's do a roll call again uh on this matter.
Alright.
Alright, and what you're voting, what you're voting on is requirement for a special permit for a freestanding ADU.
Okay, um, Mr. Ferguson?
So, I'm voting for is for it or against it?
This is a vote for it.
For a special permit for an AD.
Additional compliance, you're voting for the additional compliance.
No need, because, no, I'm, I'm actually against it because we talked about it just now, so I'm fine, I'm against it.
Okay.
Mr. Patches?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
No.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
No.
Ms. Wells?
No.
Ms. Langgallis? Mr. Rowena?
Tammy.
Yes.
What did Tammy say, what did Tammy say?
I said.
Those are quiet, yes.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Muschak?
No.
And Mr. Schuman?
Yes.
Alright, so now it's five to four, the motion fails.
Okay. Let's move on. Go back to the document.
I'll go back up to the top, um, the other one, if you wanted to do that, was owner occupancy requirement, I think that was one of the, the bigger issues, if anyone wanted to.
Um, Brian, if I may, I'm just thinking, owner occupancy on the residence is fine, I just want to clarify that before it said that the owner had to live in the primary dwelling and not in the accessory unit.
No, we, we, so the language is, it's always been just on the premises, we don't care if you live in the ADU or in the house.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep. Um, if no one has concerns, I know, um, Ms. Jordan Byron had brought up that rental duration, I don't know if there was anything that wanted to be adjusted.
One year.
Do you feel that's prohibitive to folks, though? Imagine if, you know, you're renting it to your kid for six months, or someone's coming through the city. Not sure where you want to live, you would just need six months to stop in.
Hmm. It's a good argument. It's also something, well, six to a year, six months to a year, we, 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 we want to kind of put a cap on the short term rental. That, um, Airbnbs.
Yeah, six months puts a cap on the Airbnbs, Jackie.
Hmm.
Six months should be fine with that, I believe.
Move on to setbacks.
No one raised questions about those, uh, Brian?
Um, heights, no one had a question, uh, max squares footage, that was probably a big one. Um, some discussion going anywhere between seven hundred and a thousand square feet.
I'd like to go back to what I suggested before, that if if it's a new structure, it could be limited to the seven hundred square feet, but if it is an existing structure where there is no addition, no new foundation, then it could be as big as the space is, and I'm using the example, if somebody had a two and a half story house with a full finished basement and the basement happened to be a thousand and ten square feet, but they want to rent the basement, that that's okay. Because it's inside the existing structure.
May I raise a point to that, Mr. Chairman? Sure, it, it's not, this is, it's not to argue against it, I'm just thinking if, if somebody puts an addition on that they could do as of right today, regardless of whether there's an apartment in there or not, because it's based on setbacks and heightened building coverage. What they do inside that space, whether that unit's seven hundred or nine hundred is not really relevant. I think if you want to try to separate the square footages, maybe you cap the square footage of the detached unit and then not worry so much about the um the, the, the principal dwelling, because if somebody put on a, a six hundred square foot addition, but then also recaptured three hundred square feet of their existing house. How is, how, that doesn't really impact anybody, because it doesn't look any different than it would look anyway, I think.
But, but Steve, it does, it does impact the parking, you might.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't change it at all.
Have a two or a three uh bedroom uh um, uh apartment, uh where you have uh two cars or even three cars. Uh, so I'm a little bit concerned about keeping it too, too flexible.
I Well, I mean, the required parking doesn't change either way, I, they may have more cars, is that maybe the issue you're thinking?
Yes, yes, especially, especially in the, the B and C zone where uh you've got very small lots, but you might have a large house. Um, and you can be over parking the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, I think that issue could arise whether you have ADUs or not ADUs, it's just depending on who's there.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, if they have, if they have three teenage kids who all have cars, you got the same problem, and there's no way to regulate it.
So Tammy's, uh, you're, so you wanted to do.
I, 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 I do understand, um, Steve Kleppin's point of view, and I hadn't thought about it that way. Um, so I don't know, um, I'm thinking about, maybe we don't need it.
Yeah, but I didn't the situation brought up by the speaker from George Avenue? That he has a thousand square foot uh s- space in his uh house? That this would not be allowed to be an ADU?
It would be, but he'd have to do some goofy configuration, I think.
I, I, I think that's a burden, I, I agree with Tammy, in-house can be any size that fits. Uh, right, I mean, or, or do you, or do you reach, do you reach a two family situation at that point? I mean, where's the?
Think.
Where's the cutoffs?
Well, if any, think of all the larger new constructions that were built from two thousand on that all have finished basements. And they could be perfectly good rental apartment. And, and would allow the person to stay in the house, it would defray their taxes, etc. And nothing has changed, so that square footage number becomes more irrelevant if it's not an addition to the structure.
Well, Mike, I think you raised an interesting question. Tammy, is that like, uh, apartments in the basements, you're saying?
Sure, if it's a full finished walkout, lower level, why not?
Isn't, isn't, is an option to what we're talking about now?
Yeah, oh, sure, yeah, if you had a, uh, as long as you have uh uh egress, proper egress, which is, you know, dictated by the code. A certain window size and doors for.
One or two, one or two.
Well, you would, you would have to have a, each bedroom has to have a uh re- a, a full egress, which is a window a certain size to allow a fireman to get through. Uh, carrying someone, I mean, that's how it was explained to me, so I have to put, have to put a big window in, in a window well. Uh, that, you know, goes in and out, it can't just be a basement window.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, you can make, definitely make habitable space in basements as long as you have the required uh egress.
That's what I mean by fully finished walkout egress.
Thank you, Tammy.
Uh, you were saying the same thing.
Yes, just different words.
Thanks, Tammy, thanks, man.
You're welcome, Steve, thank you.
Well, can we just say, uh eliminate attached and just say detached accessory dwelling shall not exceed seven hundred square feet floor.
Agreed.
I think we should, we should put something referencing attached, otherwise we're going to get a bunch of questions saying, well, how big can my attached unit be?
Yeah, do you have to worry, do we care about it becoming just a, a two family? Unit.
Adding to the housing stuff.
Or maximum a thousand feet, that follow the state, uh, make the uh attached a thousand feet that fits the state regulation.
That's sort of what I started out.
Yeah. And that, that would uh satisfy the, the particular speaker from George Avenue, I think that, that might be more common than we think. That kind of, well, certainly, Tammy, you just said that, there's a lot of spaces in these houses that are larger.
Okay, other uh changes, uh, Brian?
Um, alright, we had design standards, I don't know if anyone had concerns with that, that's kind of.
Right.
Prohibited structures. Number of parking spaces, really just the one additional parking space for the
Right.
unit, uh, uh, and then the, probably the last big one would be the affidavit.
I have mixed feelings about that, I mean, if it's unen, if, if, if what we have here is a regulation that's basically unenforceable, why are we requiring an affidavit?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, how many permits we hand out each year, um, we don't require follow-ups for all of them except for accessory permits.
The, the only, the only thing you, from an enforcement or litigation standpoint, is if somebody um, signs the affidavit or provides that, and then they go ahead and ignore that anyway, I think that's just another kind of tool in the tool belt, or something we could point to to say this person you know, deliberately misled uh the city with their, when they claim that they were not, um, you know, were in compliance when they deliberately were not.
I think you do that in a, like, a perpetuity state from, upon getting the initial approval?
Yeah, I mean, you could file that, you know, we do that sometimes now with affidavits, if somebody had, um an illegal apartment, we, we kind of word that uh affidavit to be in perpetuity, so it's binding on the property, not specifically on the landowner.
Yeah, but I, I think that this is an important incentive for people to follow the law. If they're going into this, looking at our regulations with an intent to skirt the law. They, this is one more level of scrutiny that they'll look at and say, you know what, I'm just if I have to sign that affidavit every year, I'm not going to do this because it means I have to violate the law over and over again. Instead of violating it once.
Does anyone, does anyone object to having that language in there? Alright, if not, let's, let's just leave it.
That'd be co- interesting to Steve and Brian over time, if people complain about that, and obviously we can revisit. I'd hate for that to be the reason why people aren't doing this.
That's never been an issue with the current with the current policy, so I mean, I, I, in a, I, I don't think it's but I don't think that's a blocker, I think cost is more of a blocker than, and then, you know, or can I even do this on their property, that's another.
And we're, don't forget, we're trying to discourage corporate uh takeover of housing stock, you know, which uh in general doesn't end well for local communities. Uh, because I talk about the absentee landlords, you, you were talking about a firm that has no, nobody, no phone number to call, and they actually own a lot of houses already in New York. Uh, very hard for zoning staff to track these folks down. Uh, we know that for a fact, and uh this would be uh another level to protect us uh from the.
Alright, let's move on, Brian, um.
Alright, so that's the bottom of the resolution, I don't know, that's the right, let me pull up the right.
Now, we, we have um a um motion um, to approve the resolution already on the table, uh, with a second.
Uh, one last modification quickly, then, um, I guess that edit the definition, are you seeing the definition right now?
No.
No.
Alright, let me reshare, because that, that needs to get changed since we changed the size.
One other just clarification question, Brian, I know at some point, previous speakers had mentioned about uh, and I think this is removed from all of this, like, you can, it can either be hooked up to your own uh septic or city uh sewage, correct? I think at one version, there was a version that said it had to be city sewage, but I think that's now out of this, is that right?
Yeah, um, yeah, I think, I think we've kept it the same, um, so essentially it's just saying if you're on city sewer, city water, you need to get WPCA sign off, which is what you would need to do for any, you know, house that you'd be constructing anyway. And then if you're on sewer or, um, I mean, septic or well, then you have to get health department approval.
But it gives you the option now, that's great, okay, thank you.
Yeah, whichever you're on is, yeah. Alright, and then if everyone's okay with that, I just took that out, since it's already regulated in the definite, uh, right, uh, article. So, you I can give you one second to fix up the resolution. And then the remainder of this is just the, the regulation. And then here's where it gets into the POCD findings.
Okay. Brian, let's do a roll call on this.
Okay. Let's keep going, bro.
And again, um, um, Mr. Patches and Ms. Jordan Bryant, Byron. Um, uh, actually, uh. We, we had them both on that, uh, other vote. Uh, it's the same matter, I'm, uh, sorry, um, I'd like to have Mister Williams, but, uh. I, I think in, um. Uh, fairness, it ought to be Mister Patches and Jordan Brian.
Alright, so. We've, we, we have a motion, Lewis, to approve as modified by the commission?
That, uh, that was not the motion. Uh, the motion was simply to approve, so is there a motion to approve as currently modified? Um, JJ, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mike seconds. Okay, um, let's do a roll call.
Okay. Um, Mister Ferguson?
Yes.
Mister Cantor?
Yes.
Mister Muschak?
Yes.
Mister Patches?
Yes.
Miss Jordan Byron?
You're, JJ.
Yes.
Miss Wells?
Yes.
Miss Langallis?
Yes.
Mister Rowena?
No.
Mister Scholman?
Yes.
Alright, it's eight to one.
Okay, um. Let's move on, um. I need a, uh, motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting. And I have such a motion, uh, Tammy moves, and Hector seconds. Um. All the, show of hands, all those in favor? Uh, any opposed, or any abstentions for, alright, Nick, uh. I assume you weren't at, you weren't at, at the last meeting.
No, I was, I just haven't had time to read them, I didn't read them, so.
No problem. Okay, uh, comments of director, Steve?
Just a couple scheduling notes, um, we talked about doing the industrial zones public hearing September eighth, and I know there was a few people that. Wanted to be there, um, and couldn't, uh, that, and, and my concern at that time regarding the date was. That we, you know, the moratorium would expire mid-September, but we actually extended it, at the last time we voted on that matter through September. So we can actually hold that hearing on September twenty-first, so we'll move it to that night, um. Where it, things get a little more complicated, uh, is at your first October meeting, which is Thursday, October sixth. We're going to hold a joint meeting with the Economic and Community Development Committee of Council. To, uh, where staff will go through the waterfront plan, which should be out any day, and as soon as that's out, we'll forward it on to you, so you have a few weeks, I actually have a whole. Month to, to digest to, um, and, and, you know, ask questions. So we'll have a joint meeting with that committee there, because you're the two bodies that ultimately have to approve the amendment to the P O C D. And then what we'll do is hold, uh, a second meeting at seven o'clock to go over your normal business, um. Trying to forecast out a little bit about, there might be two public hearings on that night, but it, there's still a couple of things with those applications that are up in the air. But I think that's kind of the schedule, how it'll unfold for, for.
Steve, what happens to the September eighth, uh, uh, agenda? What do we, uh, have if, uh, we're, we're dropping out that one item?
Um, there's, there's, um, a public hearing for, uh, an application on Three Park Street.
Mm-hmm.
There is a CAM application, Norwalk Hospital will probably be in for a prelim- preliminary review. And then we have, uh, three or four, um, administrative items to deal with as well, so it shouldn't be a super long meeting, but. There are several items that will be on.
Okay, anything else?
Nothing for me.
One is one cemetery street coming back, Steve.
Um, we've got that forecasted out, let me just, I was looking at my calendar when I was talking, I think it's tentatively. Scheduled for October sixth, but it, we, the, the, we're waiting for a meeting with Connecticut DOT to go over. The two, um, intersection alignments that are proposed, the two different options to get their take on it. Because the state roads, ultimately, they get to say yea or nay, um, so once that meeting is done, then we'll schedule the public here.
Probably not before then.
There, there.
Probably not.
Okay, there's, there's, there've been a couple articles, uh, in, uh, the news about, um. The, uh, school, which, um, we rejected. Um, can you give us a, a, an update, uh, because the articles suggested that there was some action. That the applicant was taking, uh, that I'd never heard of, uh, and so I'm wondering what's going on with that.
Um, as far as I know, Brian can, can confirm, they did not appeal your decision, which I think ran out. A day or so ago, we weren't notified of an appeal unless one's come in, in, in the, uh, law department or the town clerk hasn't. Uh, mentioned anything to us, so whether they get some petition where they get signatures to say we want the school is, is not relevant. To any decision that the city makes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have a couple of things, the first is, uh, that at our next meeting, and I'm sorry that not everyone can be there. Um, I, uh, need to, uh, appoint. Uh, a nominating committee for officers for the coming year. Uh, and then, and Ga- and Galen, uh, and Mike, um, uh, need to, uh. E- accept, um, uh, that as well, um, so. I'm looking for people who are interested in serving, uh, on the nominating committee, we're looking for three people. Um, I don't want to hear from you just yet, uh, because I want you to know that, um. If you serve on the nominating committee, you can, you cannot be nominated, uh, as an officer, so. If you're interested in being an officer, you can't serve on, uh, the nominating, uh, committee. With that in mind, uh, I would ask that if you're interested in serving on the nominating committee, and you would report back. Uh, with your recommendations at our, uh, first October meeting. Um, at, at which time we would elect, uh, officers. Please, uh, send, send, uh, uh, Steve. Um, just a, a quick, um, email or a note, or a text. Indicating that, uh, you're interested in, uh, serving on, uh, the, uh, committee. Um. The committee will come back with, uh, recommendations for officers, however, um. If anyone whose name is not submitted as an officer, uh, wishes to serve as an officer. You'll have the opportunity at, uh, that election, uh, to, uh, throw your name in the hat. Uh, that's how the process works, uh, if you want to review that again, if, if for some reason. You didn't pick up on everything I was saying, that's all in the new bylaws, and, uh, the new bylaws are, uh, online. So feel, feel free to review them, JJ?
Yeah, quick question, does this exclude, um, the alternates?
Um, it does not exclude the alternates necessarily from serving on the committee, um, I'm. I'm not sure whether alternates can serve as officers.
Right, I mean, just to be on a committee, though.
But yes, no, you could, you could serve on the, uh, nominating committee.
I, I think, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, we looked at that the other day, because we were just curious, I don't. Think there's anything that precludes them from serving the office, I just don't think they could be the chair, and I think that would be.
Oh, okay.
Because that way, if you're not seated, you can't see people, so that's like, makes it a little tricky.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, I, Galen, you had something to say? Oh, no, I'm sorry, Tammy?
Um, thank you, the nominating committee does not seek new members outside of the existing current. Commission.
That's not our job, uh, that's the mayor's.
Mayor, right, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no, we're just, look, we'll be looking for, uh, uh, the recommendation for chair, vice chair, and, uh, secretary. Um. And the second thing, uh, I wanted to talk about was, uh, that disagreement we had earlier this evening. I have no problem with us disagreeing, even disagreeing passionately. Uh, on an issue, but we had people speaking over one another. Um, we had peo- we. I, I thought it was a rude encounter, um, and it doesn't need to be. Uh, I'm never going to exclude anyone on this commission who wants to speak, uh, from speaking. So understand that you'll always have an opportunity to express your opinion. And we don't have to sort of climb all over each other in order to, to, to make our views known, um. And I'll, I'll leave it with that, um, uh, comments from any other commissioners?
Steve, how's the rewrite going?
Pardon me, Nick?
I was asking how's the rewrite?
It's done, and it was approved at, uh, the last meeting, and it's. And it's. Oh, I'm sorry, Nick, we're talking about.
Did you miss that?
Nick, that's a big meeting.
Yeah, we passed a brand new set of zoning regulations, nobody.
I'm so, I'm sorry, Nick, I was.
Oh, no worries.
No, um, I just finished up, so the last round of, uh, back and forth edits with the consultant. So, uh, it's going back to their court, so hopefully they'll have it soon, uh, Jessica, who's the lead on it, is off until Monday, so. I'll touch base with her early next week and see if I can get like a rough idea and timeframe, so I, I think we're close, because the way they do the edits is I. Actually type in the edit, so they can just copy paste, so hopefully we're getting closer.
Awesome, thank you.
Anything else? If not, uh, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we.
There is move second, and, uh, Hector seconds, uh, Hector, uh, good, good luck with your son, I hope. That resolves itself quickly, Hector has a, his young son is, uh, having some, uh, medical issues. Okay, all those in favor? We are adjourned, see those of you who are available on the eighth.
Hey, Hector, take care of your birthday.
Take care of your family, Hector, okay?
Thank you.